This is the collective committee meeting and tonight is October the 6th. And before we begin, there's going to be a couple of announcements because we have a pretty full room. If you need the ladies or men's restroom, it's all the way down the hallway. Keep going through the doors. There's also another drinking fountain down there. And we're going to talk about some processes so that you know what's going to be happening tonight. Tonight, there's actually going to be two separate meetings, one back-to-back. The first one's going to be a work session. And during the work session, when we first begin, there's always public input. And then there's going to be the work session itself. And then, when we close that, there's going to be another time when there is public input on anything that you want to talk about at the beginning of the meeting for five minutes. And I know there's been some discussion about the way that we do our public speaking. And what we have here at City Hall is considered to be a limited forum. And that means that what we discuss and what we do here is to move the business of Avon Lake along. It is not the First Amendment that you have out on the sidewalk. Out on the sidewalk, you could talk about anything, any way that you want to. Within this chamber here, it's by council's rules and there is respect. And so with that said, we're going to move along to public input at this point in time. Members of the audience shall be permitted to speak only once, up to five minutes, on a work session topic. And that's per code section 220.21(c)(1). The work session topic tonight are the findings from the Avon Lake Lear Road Traffic Study. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak at this time about Sir, come on up. Thank you. Just give us your name and the city of your residency.
President, Robert Baker, Avon Lake.
Thank you.
Earlier today, I had an opportunity to preview tonight's expected presentation. And I emailed Mr. Shamir and requested that he will share that email with council and the administration. A particular item of particular note was that upon reviewing tonight's expected presentation, I was concerned that the GFT preliminary results for the Avon Lake Lear Road Traffic Study may be lacking in critical routing assumption for Liberty Rose. GFT documents appear to lack explicit inclusion of the mandated forced turn lane or turn traffic control device on Liberty Rose at the Portside intersection within their baseline analysis routing assumptions, preliminary data analysis results, and the ODOT safety travel data metrics scenario analysis. The omission is notable because the intersection and routing assumptions specifically play a critical role in evaluating the future travel patterns on Liberty Rose and the surrounding communities. If such a critical assumption was admitted, it could undermine the validity of the conclusions about traffic flow congestion impact and potential infrastructure needs in the study area. As such, I would request that this body and the city administration request that GFT verify the inclusion of the mandated forced turn lane control device on Liberty Rose Drive and explicitly require it to be reflected in all study documents, modeling presentations, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? On the topic we have before us, say none. We're now going to close the public input. And we're going to go over to the findings from the traffic study. Mr. Cause, this is within your committee.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. This is an item that we have discussed quite a number of times in public meetings over the last year. And it originated in the Public Safety and Health Committee. And we had a number of meetings at that committee and it brought them eventually to here where it resulted in the study that you're going to hear about tonight. The mayor, Mr. Spetzel, had the most communication with the former Trans Systems and now GFT. So I'd like to turn it over to him for a more proper introduction.
Very good. And just before you do, there's one thing I forgot to mention. So on the entry table, there's another piece of paper there. It looks like a grid. And if you don't have your questions answered tonight on any of the topics, just put your name down, what the topic's about, and what you'd like to know. And our council deputy clerk will then forward it to the individuals so that you can have your question answered. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm pleased to have Aaron Grilliot and Susan Patterson from GFT, formerly Trans System Corporation, who has conducted the Lear Road Traffic Study. They're going to talk a little bit about what the study was, how we got to be to this point, what actually was reviewed, what the data was that was collected, and go over their preliminary results and then next steps. So I'm going to turn it right over to them to go through the presentation.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out to hear a little bit about where we are in the study process. And as Mayor mentioned...
Sir, if I interrupt you, you're speaker. You're going to have to sit down either here or up at the podium. Why is it it's not going to pick you up?
Okay.
And we're on television for you.
Okay. Can I sit on the other side here? That way I can see the screen.
I'm going to ask our IT person.
We are not going to be able to see you.
Because of the cameras.
If you want, if you could run the presentation, the other could speak here. That'll work.
At the podium?
Yeah.
Are you okay doing that?
Mr. Will, will you turn the microphone back down for him? Right there.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
I want people to hear you.
Yes. Yes, thank you. So here's a little bit of our agenda. We're going to review the study goals that were established with some community input back in the spring, go over our traffic count data that was collected in that late May, early June timeframe, provide some information on our preliminary analysis results, and then talk briefly about next steps. So on the screen, this is just a quick refresher for those of you that have been a part of the process thus far. It shows our study area. To the north is Walker Road. To the left of the screen is Lear Road, and to the south is Krebs. And we're essentially studying that block over to the Bay Village Corp line. Next slide. Our study goals were initially to evaluate what the existing, if any, traffic delays are at the various intersections from the subdivision roads intersecting Krebs, Lear, and Walker Roads within that quadrant that we just saw on the previous screen. Then looking at the full build-out of the residential subdivisions, which we'll have another slide to kind of highlight that area, and what that future additional traffic would do to those existing traffic delays within the study area. Talk about what, if any, mitigation or roadway or traffic control improvements might be necessary in order to mitigate those increases in delays. And then ultimately, we'll be putting together a final report to provide information to city council to help inform them in their decision-making process as it relates to interconnectivity on Liberty Rose Drive and Hanford Boulevard. Next slide. So there's a lot of information on here. I will try to distill this down to kind of give you the primary takeaways. The top table has the 17 main intersections that we perform traffic counts at along Lear, Walker, and Krebs roads. And this is what we call a heat map, meaning red in this case is going to be the heaviest volume of traffic. Green would be the lightest volume of traffic. We have two intersections that are currently signalized, that being Walker and Lear, and then the other being Krebs and Lear. And you'll see those represent the red and the orange. So those two intersections have the highest volume of traffic. And if you look at the table below, and the numbers are probably small for those of you sitting in the back here, but you'll see under Walker and Lear, you've got a number one, and under Krebs and Lear, you've got the number two. So that's just designating the highest and second-highest volume of traffic at each of those intersections. And then over on the left, you'll see Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday. So what was kind of unique on this project is normally we'll go out and maybe just get traffic counts for one day. You know, in this case, the community elected for us to get counts on three weekdays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, as well as on a weekend, Saturday. So we've got all of that information tabulated and summarized here. We'll have some other graphs that we'll get to in a moment. But what I want to just finish up by showing is that Walker Road is the grouping of intersections on the left. You'll see a lot of yellows there. In the center are the Lear Road intersections. You'll see a lot of yellow there. And then to the right is Krebs in green. And the numeric values at the bottom, you'll see Krebs being green, are essentially intersections number 14, 15, 16, and 17. So really, the main takeaway for all of you to see here is that Krebs essentially has the least amount of traffic. You've got fairly balanced traffic on Walker and Lear Road. Those are your two more heavily traveled corridors in the study area. And then again, the numeric rankings on the bottom is just showing you from number one to 17, kind of the highest concentration of traffic to the lowest. Next slide. And then what we've done is we've taken that information and we've put this graph together. So across the bottom are essentially timestamps from 7:00 in the morning until 6:00 in the evening. And we've used different colors to show the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday data, which goes all the way from left to right in the dark blue, the orange, and the yellow. And you'll see they follow a pretty similar trajectory, similar peak times in the morning between 7:30 and 8:30 a.m., and then in the evening between 4:30 and 5:30 p.m. And then kind of in the center of the screen, you'll see a lighter blue line that represents the Saturday counts, which were performed from 10:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the afternoon. And you'll see that Saturday traffic is relatively flat throughout the course of the day, and then kind of tails off into the early evening hours. So what this informed us about is really where are the heaviest traffic volumes occurring throughout the week, weekend versus weekday, you know, the pronouncement of these peaks on the weekdays. And again, we see in that PM peak, 4:30, 5:30, kind of toppling any of the other time periods, tells us that's our most critical time period. So our analyses were based on the morning time period from 7:30 to 8:30, and then the evening time period of 4:30 to 5:30. So our process, as I mentioned on one of the initial slides, you know, we wanted to look at the existing conditions, you know, what's happening with traffic operations in each of those intersections today, develop additional traffic projections for the new residential developments so that information can be layered on to the existing or background traffic. And then that would enable us to perform Item 3, which is looking at the future traffic conditions analysis. And those were evaluated essentially with four different scenarios. One scenario was with Liberty Rose and Hanford both blockaded off, so there's no through traffic. Another scenario had them both open, and then we alternated one open and one closed to get those four different scenarios. And to answer the comment that was made before we spoke, we did assume in our analyses that that turn restriction was in place at Liberty Rose as it intersects with Portside?
Portside.
So, Portside.
Portside.
Yes, thank you. And then once we went through these initial series of analyses, and this is something Susan's going to touch on later in the presentation, is we looked at what we call sensitivity analysis. So making some assumptions about travel patterns and routing, and you know, how sensitive those adjustments might be to the overall delays experienced into and out of the area. And with that, we can go to the next slide. So we've got two areas highlighted with white boxes. One is at the bottom of the screen at Lear and Krebs. This is an undeveloped tract of land where we received some information from the city that there could be potentially up to 14 new homes built in that location. And then the larger area, which is, I'm sure, of interest to many of you, is just south of Walker Road. And we've got 195 homes being developed in that area. You'll see some yellow boxes within that, and that's how we basically subdivided the area to help us make some of the traffic assignments and how that traffic routing would occur within this residential area. So as I mentioned, 14 homes and 195 homes. What I want to highlight here are how many trips are going to be generated by that number of homes in that morning peak hour that we talked about, like that 7:30 to 8:30 range, and then that PM peak hour and that 4:30 to 5:30 range. So think about it as a one-hour time block. And the information over at the side, I'll try to walk you through this. If you think about any sort of originating point for a trip or destination, you know, people are going to be coming and going. So if you think of our study area, kind of within this residential zone, we've got 32 trips, so that's about one trip every two minutes, that will be coming into this area within that morning peak hour. And 97 trips, so about one trip every minute and a half, would be leaving the area. So I just want to give a little bit of scale and context to that so that people kind of understand the magnitude of the trip making.
And this is just for the new homes?
Just for the new homes, yes. Thank you, Susan. And then similarly for the Krebs site, two trips would be coming inbound into that area, eight trips would be exiting the area. And we've got some arrows on the screen. They might be a little bit faint to see, but the predominant movement in the morning, about 40% of that traffic wants to go southbound on Lear. So coming out of the subdivision area and then heading south on Lear as the arrow kind of crosses the railroad tracks. So that's a predominant trip direction in the morning. In our next slide, you'll see kind of the reverse of that. This is the PM peak period. So you see that yellow area, or yellow arrow at the bottom, that's showing about 35% of traffic is inbound in the PM. So that's what we call the slipper movements, right? If you leave your home in the morning, go to school, go to work, you're going to be returning in the evening. So that's the predominant direction of travel that was observed. In terms of new trips being generated by the development, inbound, 106. So you know, in the morning, we said it was about 30-some, so much more traffic coming back, closer to about, you know, two vehicles per minute. And then exiting, those 195 homes are going to generate 63 outbound trips, so about a car a minute would be leaving the subdivision. Krebs, eight trips inbound to that little residential location, and then five trips would be exiting. Next slide. You want to take it from Susan?
Um, I think I'm going to stay here.
We can hear you.
Okay. So now we want to get into what all this means and how this factored into what we found for how everything is performing now and how we anticipate that it would perform in the future, given some of the different assumptions that Aaron talked about. What you see on the screen now is the ODOT standard travel delay metrics. And that's a lot of words to say, here's how in the state of Ohio, we give a ranking to how different sites are performing. And the way that we can think about this is kind of letter grades for school. If you get an F in school, that's considered generally bad.
Excuse me, could you speak up? They're having a little bit of trouble down here hearing you.
Sure. Is this a little better?
It's not going to come to them. It goes to the television.
Okay.
That's for the television.
Sorry. So A through C, we're going to show on the next couple of slides as green because in general, A through C is considered doing really, really well for ODOT standards in the state of Ohio. You can see at the top set of boxes, these are the operational goals that ODOT has set for the state of Ohio. If an intersection is operating at what's called level of service, it's basically just another name for the ranking system, the letter grade. If the whole intersection as a whole is operating at D or better, that's meeting the goals for the state. If an individual approach, think north, south, east, west, as you're approaching the intersection, if that is ranked at E or better, that's considered acceptable. And each movement, so a right, a through, or a left, is, if that's operating at E or better, that's also considered acceptable. And we're going to be using this color code system. It's one that ODOT uses. So yellow, D is yellow, E is orange, and they're still acceptable. It's just a metric to say, hey, maybe you want to start watching this movement or this intersection because it's approaching failure. So as we move into our first results slide, discussing what we are finding for the existing condition today without any of the new trips added on top of our count data from the new development. And as you can see, most of these dots here are green. And what these dots represent is the side streets operations. So what we found is that if you're on Walker or you're on Krebs or Lear, if you're trying to make a turning movement into one of the side streets, you're generally not having issues in our model. Those are operating at level service A generally, sometimes B. And what we wanted to represent here is how difficult is it to get out of the side streets for any of these intersections? And at Walker and Lear and Krebs and Lear, where we see dots, because those are two main roads, those represent just whichever approach to the intersection is having the hardest time. So as you can see at Walker and Lear, I'm sorry, Walker at Lear, that dot is, that represents that it's at least level of service C for all of the approaches to the intersection. So that's doing great. And I do also want to mention that this is, what we're going to be showing in all these slides is the PM peak hour, the PM rush hour, because as we saw in the previous slides, that's the one with the highest volumes of traffic. So that one tended to perform slightly worse than the AM. So all the following slides are going to be for the PM peak. And what we found is that you can see Bridge Side at Walker is operating at level of service D. Again, this is for the side street for Bridge Side trying to get out onto Walker. Same at Dorchester and Hanford. Folks exiting onto Lear are at level of service D. And Krebs, we see a yellow dot at Lear for, that is for the westbound direction, is experiencing level of service D at that signal. And, I'm sorry, you're right, it is, Bridge Side is, it's hard to see the colors on here. Bridge Side is actually level service E. It looks yellow up here on the screen, but in the slides, it's orange.
Let me just point this up real quick.
Yeah.
Just to help relate, the numbers in the boxes correspond to the delays. This is seconds of delay per vehicle in here. So you see a 36, this is 35, sorry, 25.1 to 35 is D, and then 35.1 to 50 is E. So 36 seconds puts it in that E bucket. So just to help people kind of understand how to read that, even though the color coding's not real clear on the screen.
And something else I want to mention too is you'll notice this chart has a couple of sets of numbers. One is for stop control and one is for signals. So if you are at a signal, it's expected that you will have a little bit more delay because half the time, you're going to encounter a red indication at a signal location. So the numbers and the thresholds to get to the next level of service worse is a little bit higher for the signalized locations. So all in all, what we found is that for the most part, folks on the main streets are not having that difficult of a time getting into the area and navigating through Walker, Lear, and Krebs. But there's those couple of locations that are in those orange or yellow colored levels of service to sort of be on the watchout for, but are still within the ODOT accepted So now we're going to start talking about what happens once we add on the new trips from the residential development that's being built and some have been already built. The first one I want to talk about is if everything's barricaded. What we started with, where our routing assumptions were that as a baseline, and we realized, I want to say upfront, we realized that this is not a bubble and many factors are at play. So we need to start with some basic assumptions. And we wanted to pick assumptions that tested the limits of all of the access points into and out of this new development. So what we assumed from the start was that Millside was not an option. And I know I'm probably going to get groans about that, but we are going to address that later in our sensitivity analysis. But for the starting assumptions, we assumed that Millside was not an option for folks to enter and exit. So that meant that if Liberty Rose and Hanford were both barricaded, that everyone has to go up north to get out of the development on Walker and vice versa to come back in. So what we found in that case was that Portside and Southport are still within the acceptable ranges for ODOT's criteria, but they are shown to operate at level of service D, which is shown as yellow on here. The next thing that we tested was what happens if we open up Liberty Rose in this condition? Now, there's not actually a lot of change here because in our analysis, we assumed that the right-in, right-out restricted turn movement condition was in place where Liberty Rose meets Portside. So in this condition, really the main thing that changes, that folks can come in on Liberty Rose and go south or amongst the development, but they can't make a northbound left turn to get onto Liberty Rose because of that turn restriction in this scenario. And so what we found is basically similar results to the last slide that we saw, where folks who are trying to get out are trying to get out and then at Portside and Southport because they can't get to Liberty Rose because of the turning movement restriction, and they can't get out Hanford. So those are pretty similar scenarios or results. So what if we flip that? If we close off Liberty Rose, again, not a whole lot of difference there. The main thing is that folks can't come in any longer. Well, then, a lot of folks want to go out Hanford because it's very geometrically centered between Walker and Krebs. So it's kind of a good location for folks who want to go south in particular. And as we discovered, you know, a lot of the draw is to and from the south. So in this scenario, once Hanford is an option, Portside and Southport are less attractive. So we see that they are operating in the green, but now Hanford has met the threshold for failure. So the numbers become important here because we are showing just over the threshold for failure here at 51 seconds of delay, which basically means you'll, on average, you'll sit in your car for still less than a minute, but 51 seconds, which is technically failure here. And that's to get out. And we did some testing to see if, you know, does it help if we add a separate right turn lane? It does help folks who want to turn right get out faster, but the majority of folks want to turn left, so that doesn't help them. So we're still seeing failures for that particular movement here in this condition. And the last one is if there's no barricades. This is sort of a combination of the first, the results from the first few slides, again, because Liberty Rose can't really be used as an egress point for most of the folks who are to the south in this development because of that turn restriction. Even if we open this up, it doesn't really draw a lot of traffic, and folks are still heading out Hanford. So the results here look pretty much the same. And I do want to also take a moment to point out that the yellow that we see at Dorchester and at Krebs and Lear and the orange that we see at Bridge Side haven't changed in these scenarios. Really, it's coming down to how are folks getting into and out of this development. And we haven't, of course, like I said, routed anybody through there along Millside, so they're not affected in these conditions. So what happens if we do introduce Millside as an option? We looked at two things. We looked at what if more people come inward from Millside to get to Hanford as an egress point onto Lear? And then in the next slide, we'll talk about the opposite. We looked at a sensitivity analysis of, you know, how many more vehicles can Hanford absorb and what does the delay look like if we do that? So if we, we started off at 51 seconds of delay on the last slide, just given our starting assumptions. If we add 10 more vehicles, the delay increases by approximately 10 more seconds. If we add 50 more vehicles, we're up to two minutes of delay. So it, depending on how folks feel about drive time versus wait time, it will probably affect how many people are willing to wait for this amount of time at a drive to get onto Lear. If we look at the opposite test that we did, and in this test, we specifically pretended that Hanford is barricaded to force all of the people trying to go south onto Millside and down through the existing subdivision to Lakeside at Krebs. So what happens if, you know, this isn't an option? Where is the next most likely place for people to go? And it's probably to go east on Millside and go down on Krebs. Now, what we did find was that that intersection of Krebs and Lakeside is very lightly traveled, and since Krebs is the least traveled of all the three major roads, that that intersection still perfor- still performs very well, even if it's absorbing all of this traffic. Now, the caveat to this is that, let's say, well, let's go back to the previous slide. You can see depending on how many people come in here, we're waiting between one and two minutes, maybe more if a lot of more people are coming than, I think we started with 52 vehicles doing a left turn. So if we say 100 folks in the PMP are trying to turn left out of Hanford, we're waiting two minutes a car. I also drove through the site and made as many of these movements as I could since the, the site's under construction still. But going from Southport, east on Millside, then down south to get to Krebs took me about three minutes. So it's going to be a little bit of a choose your own adventure for folks of whether they would rather take the, the faster path through on Hanford and wait at the intersection with Lear and, and choose to wait there, or if they would rather spend that time, you know, driving to get down to Krebs to the other direction. So that's kind of what we want to express through the sensitivity analysis is we, we can't know for sure which thing people are going to want to choose, but those are probably the likely activities that we're going to see. If Hanford is open a little bit, some of this is going to be a, a choice. If Hanford is closed, probably it's going to force people to go through Millside and then down to Krebs and Lakeside.
I don't know if you want to mention your right, it's a right turn down to Krebs versus a left?
Oh, yes. And that, it's a, it's a right turn once you get from Lakeside to turn onto Krebs if you're trying to go south on Lear. So that may also factor into some people's choices because, you know, you're, once you get there, you don't have to wait nearly as long to make a right turn. It's much easier than making a left turn. So one of the things that we looked at was would a signal help at Hanford? And as you can see on the screen, it does. The delay goes from the 51 seconds or more to 19 seconds of delay for signalized intersection. What we also looked at was a signal warrant. And what that is, is a measure based on the volume of vehicles on the main street and the side street, and an intersection of those, those values basically determines whether a signal is warranted. And that doesn't mean that you can or can't have the signal. It just means that it has met this threshold that we say is generally accepted that a signal is an option here. And it's something that the state of Ohio uses to determine whether a signal will be paid for by the state. I don't know if you have anything else that you think is more?
Yeah, it's, it's generally just a, a threshold for justification. So typically i- is, is a factor if there's state or federal funding involved in paying for that signal installation. If it doesn't exceed those thresholds, then it would have to be paid for with local funds. And there can be some other factors that come into play, you know, if it's not meeting those thresholds, you know, do you really want to put a traffic control device in that location that maybe isn't necessarily needed?
So again, doesn't mean that you can't do it, but it's, you would be on your own for it. So then I'll leave this to you.
Yeah, so I, I think before I touch on the next, next steps, let me come back to the podium real quick.
Yeah.
Before we hit the next steps, I think what we wanted to, to just pause for a moment on and just point out, you know, we went through a lot of different sets of data and results. Obviously, there's a multitude of permutations of different things, right? As each of you, you know, make your own travel routes day to day, you make choices, human behavior, you know, environmental factors that influence your, your choices. So a- again, I don't want anyone to think that there aren't other combinations of things that can be explored, and we're obviously here to take that feedback. If there's something that really comes to light that is important and it's not necessarily been vetted to date in that sensitivity analysis, you know, we'll certainly take that back and take a hard look at it before we put together our, our final report. So with that in mind, we'll jump to our, I think it's our final slide. I guess that's kind of what I was touching on there, you know, the sensitivity analysis, you know, whatever feedback we get today, you know, we'll be able to, to, you know, try to incorporate that, incorporate that into our analysis. And then we'll be moving forward with putting together our report, documenting our findings, our process, our information that went into it. And then we'll be happy to come back and do one more of these presentations to kind of run through what the ultimate findings and outcomes were for the study. And that brings us to the end.
Thank you. We're going to, at this point in time, we're going to turn it back over to the sponsor and we're going to be going through console. And the sponsor has also the last words that you know what the process is. And then we will be asking you questions throughout this time. We'll be ending this particular session. We're going to be reopening it at the CCM and everyone here can speak on any topic that they want at the very beginning for five minutes. Mr. Cause, would you like to lead the questions, please?
Yeah, I would.
Comments?
Mrs. Fenderbosh, you mentioned that at the beginning of the next meeting, there'll be public input, which I'm sure will be an excellent opportunity for people to speak to this.
Absolutely.
So I would encourage Susan and Aaron to stick around for that public input, to hear the comments once this one gavels out and that next one begins. So a couple of things, the traffic light, it didn't, it's not warranted by the criteria of the state of Ohio. And we talked about what that would mean for the city, that we'd have to assume the costs on it. Are you able to, or maybe I should ask the, the law director, speak to the liability with that? What, what does that mean if it's, if you have an unwarranted light and we, from the state of Ohio, and we chose to put it in regardless? What does that mean for the city if there's an incidental problem, whatever it may be?
Yeah, that's, are you able to, to hear me if I stay seated? Okay, thank you. Yeah, that, that right there is, is kind of the, the main concern that communities would have with putting in an unwarranted traffic signal. You know, there are engineering studies that can be done in certain situations that do justify their use. You may have seen traffic signals at some locations that maybe flashed yellow and red throughout the day, but are only cycling through green, yellow and red for specific hours. So there are those situations, but yeah, from a liability standpoint, and I, I'm not a lawyer, but you know, there is always that, you know, potential concern that should a signal be installed and, you know, there would be, you know, a, a crash there at some point, you know, there could be some litigation involved to question the validity of, of the traffic signal being installed at that location.
Mr. Cause, I'm, I am going to turn it over to our law director.
Thank you.
We're having a little bit of technical difficulty up here. We tried, you're going to have to hit it from your desk. Thank you.
Well, there's a difference between a state highway and versus a residential highway. You've got to have a basis for it. The engineering study would be very important, but it's kind of ironic that on my report tonight was a recent case that was decided in the city's favor, being the, the Lake Road issue that was filed against the city. And last week, the court came out and granted our motion to dismiss the speed limit. This was during the, the height of what was the traffic issue of 40, 35 or 25 with the business district down there with the power plant. Before the power plant was ripped down, it was a business district. It still is somewhat on law, across the street with the, the shops that are there. But the issue came up of whether or not a 35 mile speed limit was justified after the power plant was taken down. And the city actually changed their legislation. It's even in the opinion of the court that unfortunately the, the city eventually took action to raise the speed limit of 35 along the road that was not part of the business district. So you've got a business district, 25 and 35. So if after you take an action, there would be, or before you took an action in a situation like that, you've got to take, have a legislative or an engineering study done to be able to determine what you want to have. Or if there's a school crossing or school there, you've got to have some type of rationale by the city to move the speed limit to one part to the other, unless it's a state highway that is controlled by ODOT and recommendations, unless you are charter city, what the city does, and you have a reason for that that you can justify. So in this situation, you have to have some sort of a engineering report to reflect the amount of traffic going there, the amount of people crossing the highway or turning left or getting accidents. If it's a high profile with accidents, then you would have a justification for changing either a traffic light from a, from a stop sign to a traffic light in situations like that.
Thank you, Mr. Cause.
Yeah, and the second, thank you for that, Mr. Ebert. The second question that I had deals with third turning lanes on Lear Road. I didn't hear that addressed during it, but did you guys look at turn lanes on Lear Road and how that could help to calm the traffic in that area or, or help with the traffic flow in that area? What did you guys find with, with potential turn lanes on Lear Road?
Yes, yes, we did look at those, again, it's another one of those warrants, if you will, looking at certain thresholds of traffic activity. And as we talked through tonight, you know, we had a, a series of different scenarios of how the traffic would be assigned through the area. But in, in large part, in at least some of those instances, we did find that left turn lanes would be warranted on Lear Road in particular at a number of those side streets. However, since we were largely looking at delays and the delays are predominantly on the side streets, those turn lanes we're talking about would be on Lear. So traffic moving north or south on Lear, waiting for a gap to turn into the, into the subdivisions would be the beneficiary of those turn lanes. And unfortunately, it would not help traffic trying to get out of the subdivisions. So it will, is something that we will address in our final report. And it would be something that goes back to the point the law director was making about safety. We did touch base with the city in terms of, you know, some accident occurrence, particularly at Hanford. Did not see a predominance of, of crashes at that location. But that would be something to think about in terms of whether the, the city wants to put left turn lanes in or a center turn lane along a portion of Lear Road. It would be primarily for, for safety reasons, I would say, more so than to help with delays.
Thank you.
If I could, the configuration of a, of an intersection also would come into play, just like you're saying, as far as the left lane, left turn lane, where you don't have and doing a lot of left-hand accidents because of that situation.
No perfect question.
Okay. So I'm going to stay on this topic for just a second, just to clarify. When you talk about a center lane, you're also talking about stacking.
Yes.
And so there have to be a length because you have indicated that there's several areas that have delays here. Mr. Shamir, this is in your ward.
Yes, I've got a couple of questions, if I may ask. First, how were the trip generation numbers assigned? So I noticed that the numbers were assigned, was that based on the actual traffic data collection?
That was based on standards, industry standards. There is an organization, ITE. They publish a manual that is based on many, many, many inputs from research studies and before and after studies for anything from a gas station to a library, to a park, to a government building, to residences. And we use those standards to come up with the numbers you saw on the screen. We also did a quick check to compare the output of the ITE trip generation standards against what we already saw in the Hanford development because it was a nice convenient little pocket to compare against. And it, it matched up pretty well, actually. I know that when we had our first meeting here, somebody had raised a concern that whether that would be reflective of this individual community. And through that, that test, we were able to, to show that it was. And we can provide some more of that information in the, the formal study.
Mr. Shamir, if you can continue.
So as a follow-on, the delay matrix that you guys generated, how were those values then assigned?
The?
For the delays, you had a delay?
Where did the numbers come from?
Yes.
So we have a software, one of several, that we use, it's also an industry standard. It's a simulation software that uses guidance, again, industry level guidance that takes the either signalized timings from your signal, if it's a signal, or it's a much simpler calculation if it's a stop control intersection. But you essentially input your turning volumes and it spits out these results. And that's where the letter grades come from, is the same industry standard.
Now, the reason I'm asking is I know that a lot of the residents have concern on how the data that was collected was then utilized in the study. So if there is a one-to-one correlation, how did the data that you collected in the field correlate to the values that you actually used?
So what we did was, we took, as you saw in one of the previous slides, Tuesday was the highest day that we recorded. We took those volumes and created essentially a, I'm sorry. Essentially a, a map of here's all the volumes that are happening today. That's where we got the results from that very first result slide of the existing conditions. And we, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to step back a little bit. Before we input that into the model, what we did was we increased everything that we took from those Tuesday counts by about 14%. And that is based on seasonal variations that ODOT is well aware of within the state of Ohio, between if you collect on a Tuesday versus a Friday versus a May versus September. And we looked at, some of our counts were in May and some were in June. We took the more conservative factor, which is 14% increase, and applied that to be conservative in the number of trips that we assumed were out there today, since you can never capture the perfect day. There is no perfect day out in the, the real world for, for data collection. And so that became our existing count numbers, is what we saw in the field on a Tuesday increased by 14%. And we looked at the slide that Aaron was showing with the arrows of the patterns that we were seeing in the AM and the PM. Those were based on the existing data that we collected. And then the trips that we generated from the ITE process for the new development, we said, well, likely they will follow the same pattern that their neighbors are following today. And we sent, routed them accordingly. So 40% heading south or heading, coming from the south and various folks making different trips on Walker or north on Lear or east on Krebs, based on those existing patterns, just following those.
If I may continue, in fact, if we can take a look at the routing patterns on the AM peak, if we can take a look at that slide, I would greatly appreciate it.
This one?
Yes. So can I assume that the density of those arrows?
Yes.
Is correlated with density of traffic flow?
Yeah, yeah, there's your predominant, that's a, a thicker, larger arrow. And then heading west on Walker will be your second predominant movement. And then Susan, I don't know, are these pretty similar then? It looks like?
Yeah, east on either Krebs or Walker and then few, very few heading north on Lear in the AM.
And my last comment question is, we have, and I made this mention before at the beginning of the study, we have a new school that is going to be built, which is going to have about 1,100 students in. Just, I mean, about 300 yards from the corner of Walker and Lear. And was that taken into consideration because the volume is a function of a lot more students coming in? And there is a one-mile radius busing limitation from that point for those students. And then as summer goes, you have one volume, but as the winter sets in, you have a lot of parents that will be taking their students to school because walking to school within a mile and the weather, at least in today's world, is not quite feasible. So is that something that you guys have looked at?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. I, I know you had asked that question early on in the process. You know, unfortunately, that was not something that was rolled into our scope of work since we were looking at more of a present day condition, if you will, you know, overlaid with the full development of the residential subdivisions. As I understand it, that school is to come online in the next, what, two or three years? You know, certainly our study will provide a foundation and if there's additional information the community has as it relates to how trip making, you know, the population of that school enrollment, things of that nature can be maybe rolled in. I would certainly say you can use our study as a foundation and, and kind of reevaluate as you get closer to the point in time when that stuff, or when that school comes online. But at, at this point, no. We've already got a lot of assumptions that are kind of inherent in this study. And, you know, just to be honest, you know, that just becomes one more variable for trying to roll that in at this point in time.
I will say too that I think the concern with the school addition would be predominantly in the AM peak. And if you can go back, can we go back to the slide where we look at the, throughout the day?
Sure.
Go back, 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 this one. So if we're looking at the weekday AM peak, these are total traffic volumes. So, if we're looking at the weekday AM peak, these are total traffic volumes. We're at 112, 12 and a half thousand vehicles. And if we look at the PM peak, we're all the way up at 17,000 vehicles. So, all the results we talked about tonight were for the PM peak. That was kind of our worst-case scenario. And that happens at 4:30. So, I don't think that the school, at least in the PM, leaving condition is, excuse me, you know, really going to upend anything that we had, that we showed so far in the PM peak condition. And as far as it goes with the AM peak, there may be some, I'm not going to say it's not worth looking at, I think it would be worth looking at once the school is built, or once you have data about where everyone's going to be coming from, because the patterns are going to be opposite from the PM peak. But in general, I want to say, I guess, I want to give people reassurance that what we looked at today is not going to be thrown out because of the school.
Just one thing in closing, and the reason, I mean, I looked at the density and the volumes based on what was presented. I mean, a few years ago, I dropped off my daughter at that school. And starting next year, I'll drop off my son. So, I know the volume and the level of traffic that actually moves through there in the AM, not in the PM, but in the AM. And it's quite dense. You've got two schools that are daisy-chained, one after another, and everyone that wants to drop off their kids goes through Learwood to get to Eastview. And both of those become a bottleneck. So, the reason I asked the question three, four, five months ago, when we started this process, was because I had firsthand experience, and I knew that the data was available for the new school. I mean, we knew that there was going to be about 1,100 new students going into that school, and it's going to taper off to about 900. But we know that it's going to double what it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My colleagues to my right, Amy?
So, I just wanted to try and understand how the rating system works. So, this, the one intersection was rated, could be rated an F, depending on how traffic actually flows. And yet, it doesn't meet the criteria for a signal. How does that work?
Let me, yeah, let me, if I can find... Susan, I think, alluded to this earlier. So, when we talk about these school grades, the grades are associated with the amount of delay. And an unsignalized intersection, a signalized intersection, they're on two different scales. You'll see that that failure grade is at 50 seconds for a stop-sign controlled intersection, is 80 seconds for a signal. So, they're working on different scales, so that's why, just because you fall in here, you may not, and again, those thresholds are not based on delay, they're based on volume and some other factors, speed and whatnot, when we talk about the signal warrants. But it isn't exactly a one-to-one correlation, there's going to be some variance as you move between those two different types of traffic.
Let me rephrase, because that wasn't what I was trying to get at. So, we said that there's criteria that Ohio uses to determine whether or not a intersection requires or justifies a traffic signal. And this doesn't, how are they?
So, it's based on volume. So, if you have, on the extreme end, let's say you have 10 vehicles trying to get out, and they have to wait for five minutes. In ODOT's eyes, or in these national standards, they're based on national standards, it's not warranted to have a whole signal and stop all the traffic on the main street just for that small number of vehicles trying to get out who are having problems. And unfortunately, with the estimates that we have put together for Hanford, even if everyone's followed through there, it's not enough folks trying to get out there to really basically justify putting a signal in and stopping everyone on Lear.
To stop the traffic on Lear.
Because it's just not enough.
Well, I was going to say, the warrants, there's some different categories, and typically, the strongest justification is if you have a high level of traffic for eight hours of the day, so 80 or 24 hours. There are some provisions for a singular peak hour and for four hours, but those thresholds are even higher. So, that's why sometimes, like a factory, you know, you'll see it's on flash and it only operates for one hour, because you've got a huge influx or exit of traffic all at one point in time. So, there are different thresholds that are based on those different time periods. But hopefully, that gives you a little bit more understanding perspective as well.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Gentry?
There was, but I can't remember it off the top of my head.
We'll come back to you. Mr. Arnold, do you have any comments?
I do. So, in essence, if there's a blockade, I'm sorry, a barricade, a barricade put in over at Liberty Rose, you're saying that most of the traffic will be flushed down towards Walker Road in that scenario?
If there's just...
I mean, where's the traffic going to go if there's a blockade at Hanford?
Oh, at Hanford?
At Hanford?
Hanford, yes.
At Hanford. So, this scenario here.
My, yeah, what we...
So, I just, I noticed more yellow on Walker when you put a blockade, or when you put a barricade at Hanford.
So, in this particular slide, we started with assuming that Millside was not an option. So, in this particular slide, we are pretending as if everyone has to go out Portside and Southport. In reality, once we got to the sensitivity analysis later, once we assumed that actually Millside is a place that they could go, that is more likely that they are going to want to use Millside to get down to Krebs to get out, if you're headed south. Obviously, if you want to get onto Walker, or head north on Lear, you would have the Portside and Southport exits on Walker are going to be more attractive than...
Yeah. From an inbound standpoint, coming into this area, if this is blocked, people can still, if they're coming from the north, they can still make a left turn and come in at Liberty Rose if this is open. And then, again, you have the turn restrictions, so they can't turn left, but very few residences are to the north, so people could come south and come into the area.
So, you think people, if they live in the middle of that section, are going to zigzag up to neighborhoods to come to Krebs?
If they're going south.
If they're trying to get south.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
If they're going south.
Yeah.
If they're in this middle area and they're going south, they have this option to come out here and make a right turn, as opposed to going up, making a left, and making another left to come down. But again, that's where we kind of said, it's going to be, there's going to be some individual choice that comes into play. If Hanford is open, because of it geographically being in the middle, it's going to be a magnet, people are going to want to migrate in that direction.
So, yeah, so if they're open, so if there's no, if everything's opened up, I mean, wouldn't people, I mean, like you said, people would tend to go where there's less traffic, right? So, if Hanford is busy and it's impossible to get out on their road, then they're going to go someplace else over time.
And that was, I think Susan had a slide to show how, as you add more cars here, this delay exponentially grows, right? So, you add just 10 more cars, and this delay goes from 51 to 60 or more seconds. You add 50 more cars, it now doubles to two minutes a delay. And again, when you're on the side street, you've got to wait to get a gap in traffic. So, you know, as cars are moving north and south through on Lear, or, you know, making, you know, left and right turns into these side streets, you know, folks trying to get out are going to have to wait, they're kind of lowest on the priority chain, right? They're going to yield to all the other movements to find a gap. So, that's why it starts becoming exponentially harder and harder to find that gap, as there's more traffic that's wanting to get out.
So, then, they'll just find a different route?
Right.
I mean, I kind of referenced it to 83, you know, before Lear Road was open, and you get on Route 90, you know, once that opened up, then, I mean, I don't go down 83, I live right off 83, I don't take 83 out to get on the, no matter which way I'm going, I always take Lear Road, because it's easier that way for me personally. But I just think that people will go the path of least resistance.
Yeah, and that's a challenge. There are going to be some stop signs you've got to hit along the way here. So, as Susan said, do you feel like by moving, you're getting to your destination quicker? Or do you want to take the shortest path, but then wait longer?
Wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Mr. Smith, I'm just going to remind council, I can't control, the microphones up here tonight, there's a little tech problem, so you're going to have to turn it on yourself.
Yeah, that's fine. I do have a few questions. First of all, I want to be clear that what you're showing us does not warrant a traffic signal at Hanford, is that correct?
The volume thresholds are not high enough to meet the full criteria for a traffic signal, that is correct.
When it comes to traffic signals and the like, I think, and I guess this question would be to the law director, is that there are immunities to apply to situations like this, where if we did put a traffic signal there, that due to the extensive research and the like that we've done, that the city would have some immunity from accidents, or an accident that might occur? I don't really see one happen there that's from the like, but...
If based on your study, yes, if there is.
Yeah, immunities would apply, right, yeah. When was the, you have the data listed in here, when was that data taken?
Oh, the traffic counts?
Yeah, the traffic counts.
I don't have the exact dates in front of me. It was the, yeah, end of May, back half of May, and the very beginning of June. We were trying to get all of the counts completed right before the end of the school year. I know we had, you know, a camera failure out there at at least one location, and so I think we had one day of counting on a weekday that happened after school was out, which is why we put that graph together to show the comparison of the different days. But in large part, it was completed there at the very end of May, at the end of the school year.
And then, my last thing I want to discuss a little bit is Bridge Side. It doesn't look like, no matter what scenario we go with, that intersection at Bridge Side and Walker Road is in your E category. Is that something that the city needs to be concerned about going forward in terms of what we're going to do with that particular intersection?
So, let me just...
Because, I mean, we did ask you to do this in a grander scheme than just Hanford and Liberty Rose, so I see that.
Sure. And one thing I'll point out, and sorry to get you up in the map here, but a visual person, many of our intersections, Hanford and Bridge Side being a couple of the exceptions here, but many of these are what we call a T-intersection, or three-legged intersections, you'll have a main road, and then just one spine as the side street. In those cases, the side street traffic has an easier time turning, because there's no opposing traffic they have to compete with. That's what makes Hanford more problematic. And Bridge Side is another one of those, and I forget the intersecting street on the north side, but it does make it more challenging. I think, you know, one of the things that we find is, folks that want to go west, you've got a number of different roadways here that you can utilize to access Walker, that takes a little bit of the pressure off from making a left turn out of Bridge Side. And if you're going right, as we already talked, it's easier to make a right turn, because you're only waiting for a gap in one direction of traffic, instead of trying to cross two lanes of traffic. So, you know, 39 seconds, I don't know how much the numbers moved, I think they were pretty consistent throughout. We'll certainly address that in the final report. But, you know, on a grand scale of, you know, a half a minute of delay, I would not be concerned at this point in time.
All right. Well, I just see that as a potential issue. The other part of that is the fact that the Bridge Side folks are not taking that circuitous route out to Krebs Road.
Right, right, right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Zuber?
I have more comments than anything. We did a citywide traffic light study back in the early 2000s, and removed three stoplights. Moore Road and Electric, Moore Road and Lake, Miller and Lake. And then, we were supposed to remove this stoplight here, but it was turned off, and then there was an accident, so we put it back on, because those four were not warranted stoplights. So, just, so we do have some prior knowledge on some of those different things, too. I think that the mayor, and I don't know, I don't want to put words in your mouth or anything, but I think that when we did talk about briefly the school and building, the building of the new Learwood, they're going to have to put together some type of traffic study. The school's going to have to put together a traffic study, and I think that yours will help them tremendously, because I think that, like you said, that's going to be mainly in the peak hours, and you're not even, I mean, it's 3,000 cars more, it seems like to me, in the afternoon hours, and I don't think you're going to have that same effect at Learwood. I mean, we've all been around the schools and seen the lineup of the cars, but I think that this is a real good start for them. I think that it'll be interesting to see what the final analysis is. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, before I sum up? Ms. Gentry, you remember what your question was?
I did, yes. It was regarding the balance. So, as that turns red and the time delay gets longer, is it likely that people will find different ways to get there, where they're trying to get to?
Yeah, I think just, I think of human behavior. If you've gone somewhere, and you've tried one route, and, you know, it didn't go so well, next time you're there, you're going to maybe try something different. So, those that are living in this area and are familiar with it, if they know that it's hard to make a left turn, if Hanford is open to traffic, they will likely reroute within the subdivision to find another point of egress.
Mr. Shamir?
Just wanted to follow up on Mr. Smith's question regarding the timeframe when the study was actually conducted. The study actually took place after the schools went on to bike to school, and so it did not look at the flow of traffic as it pertained to full flow of school traffic during the normal school year. Just wanted to make that note. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Cause?
Yeah, thank you. And on that same point, I believe that two of those back-to-school biking days were complete washouts and raining.
I agree. Mr. Arnold, then I have two questions.
Okay. Yeah, so, I just want, I know that we're not going to make any decisions on this tonight, but when we're talking about Lear Road, and you get off, Maggie gets off Lear Road every time I come home from work, and you're going north, and Avon's a mess already, by the time you get to the tracks, that stoplight, I mean, trap, I would just hesitate to put any type of trap, another additional traffic light on their road, just because it's already a mess. Right around where the Learwood tracks are on Krebs Road, it's a mess, even getting off the exit on Lear Road, heading, you know, heading north to Avon Lake, I just, I'd have a concern about that, putting an additional stoplight, it's just going to slow down traffic even more, and it's going to be a parking lot in their road, in my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. I have some questions. So, I like to look at opposites. So, when somebody tells me, and I'm looking at the baseline analysis routing for AMP peak, if you want to turn to that particular slide, I realize this in the morning, 7:30 to 8:30, and at the very bottom, it says, well, 40% of the AMP peak outbound trips, approximately 40 trips, head south on Lear Road. My ward is on the west side, as Mr. Shamir's ward is on the east side of Lear Road, and that means that 60% are not doing that. So, I'm looking at the opposite, right? So, my question has to be, I look at main artery streets, similar to stormwater sewers, right? And there's a volume that that sewer is going to be able, the capacity is going to be able to take. And my question is, the way that Lear Road is built today, and Walker, that's another main, right? What is the capacity, like, we're at, I think it was 70-some, was it 7,800 was the highest? What is the capacity, I mean, could it be 20,000?
That's a question so many folks ask, and it's very hard to really put a number to it, because it's a function of the individual locale, driveways, speed limits, there's a lot of different things that come into play. So, the way that we try to balance that is, if you think of it as, you know, these intersections are the constraint points...
Yes.
On that sewer system, if you will. You know, that's what really limits the amount of traffic that can get through there. So, that's why we have that color grading scale that is trying to help visualize how much traffic and delay is being experienced at those intersections. So, again, I can't really give you an exact number, because there really isn't one, but it does vary, like I said, based on a lot of those different factors that I just described.
And then, the PM, the opposite of 35 would be 65%, right, is going in the other direction? So, the reason I'm asking is that when we look at city budgets, and we look at what are we going to be doing down the road, whether it is because Learwood is going to be similar in size to a high school with 1,100 from where it is now... Whether it is because Learwood is going to be similar in size to a high school with 1,100 from where it is now. And then there's Eastview that's there. Is the street wide enough? Is the intersection large enough? So then I start looking at Walker to Krebs. Is the road wide enough? So it's not just a timing mechanism, it's also like, I think of water volume. It's a volume of flow of traffic, right? And the residents that live on the west side, Mr. Shamir understands this because he's heard from my residents also, are having a difficult time going north and everybody else is going south, right? And then when they're coming home and they want to turn and people are coming in the other direction, they always have opposing traffic. Whether they're leaving or they're coming, there's always opposing traffic. So that's why I'm asking, is the road wide enough? And how many years, I'm trying to think, how far do we have to go before we need to expand it? Is this something that by changing the timing on the intersection lights? And we have two of them, we have Krebs and we have Walker. Is that going to be helping? And then you've got stacking, that's why I was talking before. And part of the stacking is going down to where the driveways are and where the streets are going to eventually be. So you need to talk to me a little bit about this.
Yeah, so there's a lot of elements to what you just asked. Great, great questions. Let me find one of these that has our dots. Here we go. So this is the existing condition, so I'm going to get up again if you don't mind. So we'll look at Walker. Walker is a green dot. And what that tells us is that on average, in the peak hour, there's about 35 seconds or less of delay for all users on average going through that intersection in the peak period. Now, turn lanes have already been added there. And if I recall, there are left turn arrows.
That's correct.
But there are not right turn arrows.
That's correct.
Correct? So those are the types of things that you've already kind of built in a solution, that the lanes are there. But you could add those, what we call five section heads. So it's the box that has the turn arrows and the solid bulbs in it so that the right turn movements could then run at the same time as the left turn. So basically, opposing movements, you know, northbound right could run at the same time as a westbound left and just kind of follow the same logic all the way around the intersection. So I think you've got some opportunity there that you can improve signal operations as needed. And of course, to your point about timing, you can adjust how the time is allocated for each phase or each movement. You can increase or adjust the cycle length, too. You know, each signal is typically set up so it's going to run for 60 seconds, 90, or 120 before it goes through the full sequence and comes back around to where it started. So that's always an option that can be explored there. Krebs was our yellow dot, which was kind of interesting because this is a T-intersection. It doesn't have four legs like Walker does. And there are some turn lanes there. I don't know, Susan, specifically, if you recall what all was kind of triggering the delay down here.
There's just a, especially this is the PM peak, there's a big demand for the folks heading home. So they're heading north. And so the signal timings are such that that's just a bigger volume. So it gets more of the green time than the westbound direction does. And that's why the westbound is shown here as having level service D or being in the yellow. The through movements are all in the green for all of these intersections on the main streets. So that means they're really not incurring that much delay.
So I'm going to pop in two more questions to kind of layer it on. So go back to the intersection, think about it at Walker and Lear. We also added bicycle lanes there, right? And we've been talking about bicycle lanes throughout. So the people that live to the east or by Bay Village, and they want to come through the developments and they want to continue through Avon Lake. Part of your study, did it also include bicycle and pedestrian or not?
No, the only location we did any counts for that type of information was down at Hanford.
Hanford?
At Hanford, yes, just because it was such a focused interest on what was going on there. But I believe that the community may have done a larger plan that looked at some bike or ped infrastructure. And I guess I don't know where your question is going, so I'll pause and let you finish your thought.
Because I wanted to know where the bike and where the pedestrian studies were. And that was off of Hanford? And that was Hanford with the gate open or closed?
Simply when we did the traffic count there, we picked up observations of anyone going through that intersection, either on foot or on bicycle.
So we'll hear more at the next presentation that you give us.
The bicyclists and pedestrians don't factor into the level of service calculations in the way that the.
Thank you.
Those work.
The one caveat would be at a signalized intersection, if you have a crosswalk, and so you have pedestrian push buttons and countdown signals, you do need to allocate time for the pedestrians to safely get across the street before the signal changes. So that can have an effect on a signalized intersection's level of service.
And I do have another question, specifically with Hanford. Presently, the residents that are living on the south side of the development, which should be the north side of Hanford Street, they're using, and they've used it for a number of years, Hanford as an area that they can have their guests park at. When you did your studies, did you consider having cars parked there or was it without cars and it was a complete flow?
Are you saying that they are parked such that no one can pass along the street because they're parked there?
Difficult to pass?
As long, so the way that the calculations work for a level of service is it's once you get to the intersection, how long do you basically have to wait at the intersection? So that also wouldn't, it's, I want to, I guess, emphasize that all these calculations, and similar to what Erin was talking about, is we use these intersections as bottlenecks to get to your question about segment capacity is really answered through these calculations of intersections. That's basically the same answer, is that we're not looking in the level of service of how long does it take you to navigate along this segment? We're looking at what happens when you get to the intersection and you want to go through or make a turn? What is the level of service there?
Thank you, and I think there is one more question, and then I'll be finished. Just to be clear, the highest approach delays, no barricades, Hanford signalization at Lear, correct? That would be under the assumption that there would be no gate, is that correct?
Right.
And there'd be no gate at Liberty Rose, is that correct? But the restriction would remain at Liberty Rose? And Millside would be cleared through? Thank you very much. Any further questions, Mr. Gentry, please?
I don't think this was in scope, but I'm just wondering if you had taken into consideration the impact on Schiller and Jaeger? If that duration is as it is, are you familiar?
Are there the little colossals?
Underneath?
Yeah.
Hey, Hanford?
That will be in the final report. They are in the model, but they're, they just, we had only limited time for the presentation, so.
Okay, seeing no further questions at this point, Mr. Cause, do you want to summarize?
I have a question, please.
Oh, yes, please, Mr. Bear, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I want to comment on Mr. Zubor's comment on the traffic study. There will be a traffic study done when the new school, in that process. I have another question, kind of inverse of what Councilwoman Gentry asked. If you were to put a light at Hanford and Lear, would you anticipate a greater volume of traffic at that intersection because of the less delay to get out onto Lear?
Yeah.
So that would actually increase traffic on Hanford, you believe?
It would. It'll be the path of least resistance. So those that are maybe taking the more circuitous route through the neighborhoods would probably migrate to that location just because it's so centrally located between Walker and Lear.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Good question. Okay, Mr. Cause?
Yeah, thank you. So just to kind of wrap this up, this is obviously not going to be on the October meeting, Safety Committee meeting. They're still working on their final report. They need a few more weeks. We hope to have this, we need to have this before the November meeting, if not, you know, prior to that, of the Public Safety and Health Committee, and that's the third Tuesday of November. We can move that up if need be because we're getting into the holiday times as well, too. So we need to stay in communication on how you guys are coming with that final report. So it is my intention to have this on the next, the agenda of the November meeting of the Public Safety and Health Committee with a recommendation to come out to the full body of council. I don't know if it will be a motion or legislation that the city's going to have to undertake. We're waiting still for the law director to put forth his opinion on that. But regardless of whichever it is, it is my intention to have this matter decided by the seven members of this city council before the end of this calendar year.
So in other words, if I could put it very simply, the sooner that you have your results, the sooner that we could schedule even a special meeting for Mr. Cause's committee so that we could have this process. Because we have a lot of residents here that have been waiting a long time for determination. And I think that that would be to the best of everybody's venture here. Okay, very good. All right, we're all good here? Okay, at this point in time, we're going to close the work session. And we're going to take just a moment. Is anybody need a break? Can we go right into the next meeting? Are we good to go into the next meeting? Okay. Give us just a moment to get our technology together here. Okay, all right. This is the beginning of the collective committee meeting for October the 6th. And tonight, we're going to, first of all, start out with input from the residents. And I'm going to repeat what I had said at the previous meeting, that this is a limited forum, that everything we do here is to move the business of Avon Lake through. And we try to do it in a very respectful manner. Out on the sidewalk, people can speak however they want to speak to each other. But in this chamber, we will have respect. And with that said, I would like to let everybody know, because I know you've been waiting a long time, the residents that are here, that if I have general consent from everyone, I'd like to move, after you are finished speaking, Mr. Cause's committee up to the very front so that our consultants who are here, who need to be back in Columbus tonight for another meeting, if we could include them. So before I start out, I just want to know, is there general consensus that after input, I could move it up? Everybody good to my right? Anybody object to my left? We're all good? Okay, then we'll do that. So now we're going to open up to public input. Members of the audience are permitted to speak once, up to five minutes on any topic per our code or in section 220.21B1. Who would like to be first? Come on up, sir. Give us your name and let us know if you're a resident of Avon Lake.
Resident of Avon Lake, the Sumer Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Bear.
It relates, obviously, to the traffic situation in Hanford, et cetera. I'd like a little bit of a clarification.
If you could come to me to talk about it, that's great.
I'm just trying to look at the, I'm a visual person also. I'd like a clarification on the numbers that you used. For traffic that's going west, okay, on Walker and making a left-hand turn, okay, onto Lear, going north in the morning. On a Tuesday, there's like 19,000 people, cars go through that intersection according to your dad. I don't know how many make a left-hand turn there at the intersection of Lear and Walker. But out of that, whatever number that is, what percentage did you take to have it take an alternate route, you know, through the neighborhood and out Millside and in Hanford?
Do you want us to answer the question shortly?
If you could, please.
Yeah, you're asking if we took traffic out of the Walker intersection and routed it through the neighborhood instead?
Yes.
No, we did not.
You did not?
Did not.
Then how can you determine, how can you project what volume of traffic is coming out through Millside and Hanford? If you didn't pick a number, okay, a model, you know, how many people are going to convert and no longer make a left-hand turn onto Lear from Walker? And the same, the reverse situation going back in the evening, you know, those people heading south on Lear, you know, and they currently now have to make a right, okay, onto Walker. If you didn't take whatever percentage of that traffic now is going to cut through Hanford to Millside and then out Parkside or Treeside or Bridge Side. And why that's important, okay, is because you've got West Wind, which is a huge development, north of Walker, okay? Those residents are going to cut through the neighborhood, down Bridge Side, Parkside, Treeside, or any one of those things, to Millside, and then out Hanford. And in the reverse, when they come back in. And so if you don't do that, you're not really getting a good model of what kind of volume's going to be going out through that, those streets.
If I can point back to this exhibit that's on the screen here, you know, what we found with this baseline model, you'll see a lot of green dots on there. So when you think about that path of least resistance.
If you're not using real numbers that are based upon the actual traffic counts you took and then diverting those, a certain percentage of those to alternate traffic pattern, you're not really showing the true picture of what could possibly happen, potentially happen.
What Erin's getting at is that we would have done that had we found that the Walker-Lear intersection was performing poorly such that people would want to avoid it. But our data doesn't support that assumption, and so.
Well, then you've never driven on the road, but okay. The second thing is, all this is fine and good. But the residents that live in Hanford, in those streets around there, in a Jaeger, in a Schiller, in a Treeside, a Parkside, a Portside, a Bridge Side, and all those, they're going to experience a drastic increase, okay, in volume of traffic. And the whole issue here, since day one, has been the quality of life in those neighborhoods and how it's going to change if Hanford is open or connected to Millside. The safety of our neighborhoods, of our kids that are playing, people walking, the noise levels will change, the traffic. It should just be a whole, a different environment for the neighborhood. Just picture if your neighborhood were going to change that way. That's what the essence of this whole thing is about. This traffic study is all fine and good, but I have my doubts about how accurate it's really predicting what the outcomes are going to be here when those choices are made available to those other people. By the way, I didn't even mention all the people coming down. You're not taking into account the people coming from Bay Village down to Walker to get onto Lear, to get onto 90, okay, et cetera. You're not even taking those people into account if you're not taking a certain percentage of that traffic that's making that left turn onto Lear from Walker and the reverse coming home. So I got my doubts about, you know, what you've accomplished here, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak? Come on up.
Thank you. Hello, Vince Conan, so Avon Lake. I think I just don't understand a few of the slides, if you could help me. This one, guys. So this is the highest side street approach delays existing conditions. So the existing conditions, as we stand here today, are that both Liberty Roads and Hanford are blocked, are barricaded, correct? Okay, so your next slide, if you don't mind going to the next slide. This is dual barricades, in other words, the existing conditions.
But this has layered into it the new trips generated by the residential development that's being built.
Okay, so this is based on a projection of what will happen once that home is built. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Nowski?
Good evening, Paul Nowski, Hanford Boulevard. I had a question concerning the averages, where it says like 60 seconds to get out, is that per car? So if you've got 10 cars, what does that mean?
So the average wait time for that vehicle is, for any of the vehicles, is still that time. So these are over the course of an hour. So for example, in, let's go to this one, where, actually, let's go here, where there's no barricades, over the course of an hour, I'm going to try to remember off the top of my head, there are about 50 vehicles trying to make a left turn at Hanford onto Lear. So that equates to fewer than, just under one car per minute. So if that car is waiting slightly less than one minute, so that car has waited, then clears the intersection and then the next car. This is all as if the cars were coming in an orderly fashion, one spread out evenly over that hour. So that's why it's an average. But basically, what we're seeing here is that one car has cleared, the next one comes up. They also have a similar wait time. They clear the intersection and it repeats in that pattern.
Basically, it's per car?
Yeah.
So it could get exponential? And, you know, 10 cars.
And that's what we see here.
Yes, and that's, yeah, that's what we point out there. So you add just a few more cars and you could be up to two-minute delay, so yes, it is.
My only other comment is to counsel, if you have the current conditions up there. My only other comment is to counsel, if you have the current conditions up there? I don't see any red dots. Now, you spent $220,000 to do a study. There are three scenarios that generate red dots and it's all at Hanford and Lear. I don't see how you could do a study that tells you there's three failures and vote for that. Makes no sense to me. You did the study, you saw whether the work, where some get worse than others, but there's only three spaces where there's red dots and failure. Don't fail us.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, Mike Dunford, Avon Lake. I live in Current Village. I think I'll agree a little bit about human nature, what you said, people may find a different way of getting there, but I'm going to give you some actual human nature. I, when I come out Hanford to make a left turn onto Lear, and I don't care what time of day it is, but if it's in the morning or the afternoon, I put my car in a sport mode, okay? And I look for the smallest gap I can get because I'm sitting there for more than a minute and I hit it and I take chances. And the, and human nature's going to be, the longer people sit there, the more chances are going to take. So I'm just saying, there's going to be accidents because, Zach, you talked about, you look at traffic at the end of the day, it's lined up from Walker Road to Ninety on Lear Road and there's not a lot of gaps to get in and out. So it's just going to get worse, people are going to take chances and we're going to have some issues.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir, come on up.
Jonathan Wisshard, Avon Lake resident.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Yeah, W.I.S.H.A.R.T.
Thank you.
I live on Bridgeside and Walker, Level E, but I don't want to talk about that. We've petitioned the city, I think you have an email that's been forwarded on to you guys back in like 2017 to improve a road on Lakeland Avenue, which is east of West Winds, West of Cove. And then we were responded, we were given guidelines to meet in order to get a road put in and I believe that we met those guidelines and then we were told we didn't meet the guidelines. So I know a number of people are different, we have a different mayor now, Joseph Rees is no longer here, but we would like to get that petition going again and try to get that road improved because it's acting as a liability as opposed to an asset for the city and for the individuals that own that property. Any questions?
Mr. Shamir.
If I may, I have had conversation with the residents now for close to a year and there were some documents that I forwarded to Mr. Ebert with respect to that property, well, that group of properties because it's a large number of parcels, which, which I think that's the first, and I think if we can get those answers, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I lived here on city council, I shouldn't say I lived here, I, I worked here on city council during the period of the different petitions and there were two petitions, if I recall correctly, and the first time they didn't have the numbers, the second time they had the numbers and what was shared with us was that the residents would pay this amount and the city would pay this amount and at the time, there wasn't enough funds in the general fund for the city to pay, to put the road in and the infrastructure and to care for it. And I recall that that was the reason that Mr. Wrights, who was head of the engineering department, denied it.
Okay, I don't have that.
Okay. I was there at public service when it happened and I recall that presentation and I recall that discussion with the finance director then and the law director. Maybe things have changed, but I just want to give you a history of what happened.
Okay, that'd be fine. I would like to have in writing the history, like when you call Lorraine County to find out the minutes of the meetings when Cove and Highland were developed, there's no minutes to the meeting to talk about future development of Lakeland. There's, we have the petitions, I don't know if we can find the petition, we have petitions notarized for all the individuals when we petition the city. I don't know if the city has access to those as well. We have those. I just don't, I guess I need to know guidance then I guess when I just tried to do this and move forward the right way.
I would recommend that, that you make an appointment with the community development director, Ted Esborn, and he can help with Mr. Shamir walk you through the process.
Did you guys all receive the email?
Correct. Thank you. Anybody else, any other topic?
Did I go further?
Yeah, oh, yes.
What, where exactly is he talking about?
Go ahead.
So it's east of the West Winds, if you're familiar, and it's on Lake Road. So there's the West Winds, then there's a road that will be called Cove. So it's in between that, in between Cove and in between West Winds. There's a road that was sold, it's on.
It's a paper street, it's not developed.
It's not electric, Boulevard.
It's not developed.
No, it goes north and south, electric. So it's always parallel code.
It would be, is it an extension of Cove? No.
Mr. Zuber?
It's a paper street, similar to Highland and Cove, with forty-foot lots on it, would start at Lake Road and go to West Winds and would cross-section and electric.
I just, it seems like development to the east, west, south, north have all been developed. That little spot has not been developed. And I think the city could better promote that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Come on up. Thank you.
My name's Rudy Mueller, I live in Avon Lake. I just wanted to ask a question. If, if you're at an intersection and there's a lot of people turning left, which is safer to just leave it the way it is or to put a light?
Our consultants? If we go to the consultants, it'll take some of your time. Can we go to the consultants to answer or do you want, all your questions?
So that's, that's my question. I, I understand, my, my son, he's the one that educated me on this, that forty percent of the accidents that occur, the fatal accidents are when people are making a left-hand turn. And so if we can, and I, I do believe if there's a lot of people turning left, that we should be concerned about that. I also, I'm, I am a physician and I do believe that blood flow is better the more arteries that you have open and whether they're big or small, the more you got, the better. If you want to move things through, you want things open. And, and I do believe there's engineering that if there were other lights, I don't, I don't want another light added, but if we're going to have a light, I think we can do it in a smart way. I do agree that maybe the road needs to be wider, that also would increase blood flow the wider the artery. So again, I'm just asking, is it safer to have a light or not when there's a lot of people making left-hand turns?
Thank you. I'm going to refer back over to our consultants.
Yes, so a traffic signal does establish a right way, so it takes some of the guesswork and he was a gentleman that spoke to, you know, accepting the gap and making the turn, which is why we talked about those thresholds, that there are certain points that you look at where there's enough traffic that, that change to a traffic signal from a stop sign comes into consideration. But there are also other intersection control types like roundabouts that are a more proven safety feature because they eliminate the left turns, so.
And I'm sure when these roads were originally built, they did not think that Avon Lake would be as big and there'd be as much traffic. So, you know, I, I think there's going to be a time when things are going to need light, whether it be three, you know, a third lane in the middle or whether it's two double lanes, I don't know. But thank you for your time. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. Somebody else? Come on up. Thank you.
Hi, Debbie Yu, Avon Lake. I have two things, I want to use my five minutes for, one is a question for the consultants and another one is just a comment for council. So the question for the consultant is, I want to make sure that I'm understanding the red dots correctly, when we're talking about Hanford and Lear, we're really talking about Hanford and Teasel Court, which is the street across the way, and Lear. And I was wondering, was there any sort of traffic? Anyone who lives on Hanford or exits off, out of Hanford knows right now, you know, with the difficulty, you had to watch the traffic from across the way when you're making the turn and when they want to make a left turn or right turn, whatever it may be. So I wanted to know, so that red, that red dot is equally applicable to those on Teasel Court as those on Hanford, correct?
It is actually not. I will, I'll have to pull something, I mean, it'll be in the final report, the specifics, but in this case, I do recall that Teasel is not in the red for their movement, whereas Hanford is the white, just because there's much more volume on Hanford so that create a longer wait time, but I can look up that information.
Because I find it hard to believe because anything on Lear will impact those lines, but.
Right, and that's what we mentioned earlier with, with Hanford being one of those four-legged intersections, the same as, as Bridgeside where some of the others are the three-leg, so there is more delay there. That does complicate things for Hanford. I think the issue with Hanford is its left turns and if you're thinking about traffic going south on Lear, there should be a right turns off of Teasel, a right turn is easier to make than a left turn.
And along those lines, so in terms of my comment, one of the basic tenants of when analyzing traffic and traffic flow is to preserve the quality of the traffic flow, so the quality of the traffic flow before and after. And so as we're looking at the quality of the traffic flow, it's important to know that having, you know, we're talking about the barricade versus non and which, which flow, we also need to make sure that we preserve the quality of the traffic flow for those who live in the, in, you know, these residences, those on Jaeger Court, on Schiller Court and in Current Village. It, you know, certainly it does impact it. I hope that the traffic consultants in the final study also understand that it's important to preserve that quality of traffic flow. But also, you know, I want to mention, I don't think that it's shown just in the short presentation, but perhaps it'll be in the final report, in terms of the difficulty, as they mentioned, making that left turn is always the difficulty. And so those making the left turn out of Schiller Court, out of Jaeger Court will certainly be impacted by, you know, if the, if there is no barricade on Hanford and when it's red, the people who are making that left-hand turn will certainly have difficulty. But in addition to that, those who are exiting out of Current Village, so out of Brust or Brust Alley, will also have difficulty in, in trying to maneuver and navigate exiting those streets. And also, you know, there, where Brust Alley is in, where this, where this, the area, the cut through is, it certainly will make it difficult. And there are, you know, you know, I, I'd say that it's important to also know the, the possibility of traffic accidents, increased accidents from those making the left-hand turn out of Jaeger Court or Schiller Court, as well as those exiting Brust and Brust Alley on, if there is no barricade at Hanford. So I'd like to also mention that, but thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Get up for a half hour. Thanks. Two for the price of one, all right?
Yes. Hi, I'm Bridget Scugan, I live in Avon Lake in Southport and I just wanted to say that Hanford Boulevard is a publicly funded and maintained road. It serves as a vital connector for numerous subdivisions in the area. As the TIA found, worst-case scenario at peak, peak traffic times, so we're talking rush hour, you're potentially waiting one to two minutes at Hanford. And as they stated, humans are going to do what humans do, which is find the path of least resistance. So I know as someone who lives in Southport, I could easily avoid Hanford at peak traffic times without a problem. And I do also want to note, the residents of Current Village have been outspoken both at the council meetings and by trying to convince residents of neighboring developments to side with them by dropping off anonymous letters on our doorsteps with unsighted statements about how a lack of a gate would negatively impact us. They claim that they care about safety when in reality, my neighbors and I can see right through this. The residents of Current Village want to use taxpayer money to create a private gated community despite Hanford being a public street. I have heard multiple accounts from my neighbors that these residents have asked people not to walk their dogs on Hanford Boulevard, stating that it's a private neighborhood. Wanting a gate follows this line of thinking, they want to keep people out. Keep in mind that while they may be present at these meetings, many of my neighbors sent emails in opposition of the gate. The age demographic of Southport compared to Current Village is vastly different, a lot of young families and as you see, it's a little bit challenging to bring your children to these meetings, but I can promise you that the majority of people in my neighborhood, Portside, Bridgeside, do not want a gate at Hanford. The Walker and Lear intersection is also heavily traveled by pedestrians and cyclists, especially school-aged children on bikes at Giant Eagle. Forcing Southport, Portside and Bridgeside to exit at Walker Road creates more congestion at this intersection and potentially makes it less safe for those cyclists and pedestrians. I personally enjoy walking with my kids to Giant Eagle and I feel very nervous when I need to cross the street at Walker Road to safely get to the grocery store, especially at peak traffic times. Having options to lessen our commutes by opening Hanford Boulevard is a fair thing to do since it is a public street that our tax dollars go towards maintaining. As the TIA showed, there are a few enough cars that even at peak times, Hanford does not meet the threshold for needing a signal. I know, like I said, as a Southport resident, if it's awful to get out of, I can easily find a different route. Current Village residents are welcome to do the same, they can come through Southport, leave at Walker. And I think if the city, it would be really disappointing if the city allows the Current Village residents to bully them into creating a private gated community instead of looking at options that are fair for everyone. It sends a divisive message when the city should be looking at how to make the area more accessible to the majority, not the minority who values their peace and quiet over our community. As tax-paying citizens, don't we all deserve the path of least resistance?
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? Come on up.
I just had two questions because I was just a little.
Your name first.
Sorry, Ann Maloney, Current Village.
Thank you.
So I understand the difference between existing condition and adding the 195 homes and potentially the 14 homes, but I didn't know if you accounted for any modeling for the Bridgeside area, so anything east of Southport. Because it seems that that would open up as well, especially if Millside's in the mix.
That's where we got to in our sensitivity analysis, just sort of rather than trying to assign an exact number value of how many people could come from the existing residential areas, just testing what happens if we add more cars, add more cars, add more cars, rather than trying to decide who would or wouldn't make that movement. That's what we showed in this slide where if fifty additional people, then our initial assumptions, you are up to two minutes delay, it would go up from there if more than fifty vehicles just in that hour.
Right.
It goes from there.
And while I understand that, wouldn't that be part of modeling to identify what the addition, number of additional vehicles would be given some sort of model that you would apply?
We have at our disposal a model that allows us to make assumptions about traffic volumes at each intersection and it will calculate for us the level of service based on that. There are travel demand models that exist in the world, but they are maintained usually by ODOT, by NOACA, other MPOs, ORBC from Columbus is one, and those are very big regional models and that's, I think, the type of things that you are, you're getting at here.
Okay.
It's something that is used on a different scale and it's a different tool than what we're working with here. So what we're working with here as far as routing is, how many people do we assume are going to come through each intersection? The route that they choose to get to that intersection is more or less, it's not irrelevant, but it's, in terms of the calculation and the numbers, it's really how many are at Hanford. Where they come from specifically is of less importance to that calculation. So in this sensitivity analysis, we focused on what's the, what's the max volume that could happen.
A matter of scale, if you will.
Yeah.
But I guess, you know, I'm just want to sort of try to elucidate, are there going to be a thousand people on Hanford? Are there going to be a hundred more? Are, you know, you know, just to get an idea of.
If I go back to the 195 homes, we had some numbers that we showed in terms of these.
But there's, excuse me, there's 750 more, right?
No, but, but just to give a point of reference.
Okay.
You know, we're talking about with that nearly 200 homes, we're talking about, you know, one or two trips per minute.
Okay.
So.
At peak.
At peak. So it's going to be less off-peak.
Okay.
So just to give some scale, whether it's a hundred, 200, 300, 400, 500, we're talking, you know, maybe handfuls of cars and they've got, you know, how many different intersections they can disperse between, so.
It sounds like the. It sounds like the numbers could be much higher than that, in, to me, but.
Intuitively, it might, but that's why we want to give people that perspective. When you start drilling down, it really is not a big number.
Okay, very good. That's very helpful.
Something important too is it, it might have gotten glossed over in the previous slides that with 195 homes, we're only looking at 106 trips was one of the biggest numbers that we saw. So not everybody, it's not a one-to-one of each home equates to one trip during the peak hour. So with 700 homes, you're gonna have some subset of that are, are making these trips in that hour.
But, you know, and then also there's non-peak hours and there's the landscape companies. There's the Amazon trucks. There's everything as we have a, you know, we're a very lucky community. So we have a lot of traffic. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward with any topic? Yes, come on up.
I just have a comment. Jennifer Hardman, Avon Lake, Parkside Drive. We dealt with this seven, eight years ago when Parkside was connected to Hunt Club. Went to a lot of these meetings. Um, didn't get any traffic coming or anything, but I have to say that I don't agree with the barricade because it is a public street. And the more arteries, as the doctor said, the better. Some of the traffic still pretty heavy on Parkside, but there are people that go down Millside, cut down Treeside. They all find a way, as we, as we said. So that is just, you know, I've been through this before, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any topic? Yes, come on up.
David Morahan, 39280, Dr. Road, Avon. Me and my brother are the co-trustees of 32 of the lots on that undeveloped street that was mentioned earlier. You mentioned that the property owners had to pay for part and the city was gonna pay for part of the road?
That it's an assessment. Yes, there's, yes, so there would be an assessment for part of it. And part of it, the majority of it would be the city.
Okay. Is that how the city usually does streets in Avon Lake?
When, when there is, it's not just the street, it's a sidewalk, it's all the infrastructure. And there would be an assessment to the homeowners. And that's why for the first time that the petition went out, some of the people said, no, I don't want to sign because they found out that they were gonna be assessed. And then the second time, they were, they did reach the threshold of what they needed for the assessment. I'm sorry, for, for the petition. But then when the city looked at it, Mr. Rice was directing us through the Public Service Committee and said that the city does not have the general fund to put the street in and all the infrastructure and to maintain it. But this is a new day, it's a new way, so.
Right. On this, the city go about putting a budget together for something like that.
I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Mayor. I think he'd have a better answer.
Typically, well, go back to any subdivision that's developed. Usually developer puts in all the infrastructure, all roadway. They pay for it. So the developer will pay for it. The city does not pay for that. In the instance that we're talking about here, we would have to engage an engineer to design the roadway. And then based upon the roadway, which would include water lines, sewer lines, sanitary storm, sidewalks, pavement, he then would put together an estimate of construction for that.
Okay, so after we do the estimate of construction, what does the city do with that? Do you put it in your budget for the following year, the five-year plan? What do you do? This can't go on for eternity. It's been in my family for many decades. Taxes went up 290% this year. Are we supposed to just keep paying for everybody else to use our property?
I'm not sure how to answer that question. I would say that if we're looking at the development of the street, it would certainly impact our budget depending upon what ratio would be paid by the homeowners as far as being assessed and what would be paid for by the city. And with tax dollars currently being very tight, I'm not sure that the council would inevitably approve any budget for that. But with, with budget being very tight right now, I don't see that.
The reason why I asked you to start with Ted Esporn. So we did not have a community development director back in the day when you had your first, your second petition. Now we do. And because this would become a subdivision, right? Become a street, become a subdivision, we would need to go through planning and there's a process that that would take place. And it's, it's a lot more logical. I think you'll have your, a lot of your questions answered and a pathway to move forward if you could meet with Mr. Esporn. And your, the council representative for that area could meet with you and him together.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else on any topic? Okay, come on up, sir.
Robert Baker, Avon Lake. Sorry. Uh, would thank GFT for the clarification on the inclusion app, applying the critical assumption for Liberty Rose. Only ask that it's clearly identified in the, where it was applied in the final report. Um, and the only feedback that I have in this moment, and given that we're trying to gather as full picture possible, is to request that GFT refine the sensitivity analysis to include the additional scenario of highest approach delays, Liberty Rose barricade, Hanford signalization. Finally, just a comment on another comment regarding an early mention of concerns of noise issues. As a general comment, in my opinion, I think the city's older legislation is in need of a review. It's a, the lacking, it's lacking effectiveness as it's been applied. The current legislation is applied in various ways and there are lacking effective legislation to address issues of noise as they exist today. And in preparation, and in preparation for the continuing growth of the city. And I requested the city take a look at that as other cities have approved actively addressed noise.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else on any topic? Come on up. Thank you.
Scott Kennedy, Avon Lake. Talked about this before. Kind of like the one favorite comment of the night is the gentleman talked about as far as having more arteries, being better for everybody. It's kind of like the concept of what's good enough for me, but not for thee seems kind of the theme for the residents around Hanford Boulevard. It's a shame because there's a number of stub streets that still exist in the city and that had existed in the past throughout the city that were developed or might be soon to be, be too developed. One of them even being Schiller Court that is a stubbed-out street now. The property itself of that is privately owned, but somebody could turn around and sell that to a developer and Schiller is no longer a stubbed-out street. People are gonna scream bloody murder about that.
Excuse me. Mr. Hurd, could you help her with the, with the elevator, please? The lady with the baby? Could you help her with the elevator? Could you help her with the elevator, please? Thank you. I'm sorry, sir. We're gonna give you back 20 seconds. I'm so sorry.
You know, Hanford Boulevard, if it's not gated, is also a two-way street. That residents of that can also go the other direction. To my count, there is 76 homes, counting homes between Current Village, Schiller and Jaeger Court. There's 190-plus that you're count in Southport. There's the other ladies, there's at least 200 to 300 parts of Bridge Side. That will be inconvenienced if we keep the gate up. And all that Southport traffic, if they don't want to go north, they're gonna want to go south. And that's gonna increase the traffic for probably double the amount of houses that are gonna be affected on Current Village. Going past my house in Bridge Side through somebody's joke of a city master plan getting out the backside to Krebs because Uber drivers and everybody else gets lost coming in that way. And to people's, you know what I'm talking about. People's emotional decisions, sometimes a lot of people, when I get dropped off, I'm like, it's probably easier for you to just go up to Bridge Side, two left turns, you're back on Lear Road. Like, people make different decisions on emotions. I'm probably not gonna go out Hanford Way if it is opened and make a left-hand turn and sit for two minutes. I'm gonna probably go to Krebs or sometimes I even go up to Walker. Everybody makes decisions. But coming in, making a quick right-hand turn, it's gonna be a shorter distance because I'm making a right-hand turn versus a left-hand turn. So it's, everyone, we're trying to put numbers on thousands of people's decisions that, to Jen's point, seven years ago, when Parkside and Woodside was connected, there is not, there's only one development. And the officers could probably back me up and people that have lived here for their whole lives, there's only one development in the city of Avon Lake that only has one egress or entrance. And that's the Koff development over by the Avon Lake Walker Road Park. Every other development has multiple arteries getting in and out, both for connectivity and for safety vehicles, but then also for public convenience. Hunt Club used to be one of those. And when the city wanted to, or the developer wanted to connect that, the arguments that Jen set here made was it's gonna be a racetrack. It's gonna be a drag race. And there are still issues with speed. And that's a different conversation that we've had with safety committees about stop signs and stop signs are not to be used for speed, speed control. That's an argument for a different day. But that connection was made and everybody freaked out that we're gonna have such an increase in traffic. And we might have initially with Hunt Club, but then people still figured it out. It leveled out because there's multiple arteries. I live on Bridge Side. There's some days where I actually go over to Parkside or to Treeside because I know Bridge Side on the Walker Road is a nightmare because of Long Point on the other side. A gentleman made a comment about, he's concerned about West Winds traffic coming down through Bridge Side to Krebs. I can't imagine unless somebody's stopping to visit somebody that somebody's gonna drive through a residential neighborhood at 25 miles per hour with pedestrian traffic, multiple stop signs, to get there versus going a quarter mile down. So I know it's emotional, but bottom line, Hanford is a public road. It's maintained by public funds. And you are asking some, like, bowing, potentially bowing 75 residents, 75 homes to over 400 that are gonna be affected, if that's not. Doesn't mean we're gonna see 60-plus cars that are going today because people might see there and they're gonna sit there for 10 minutes and be like, this sucks. I'm gonna figure out a different way. So it is what it is. I guess we'll wait for another day.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going through the room here. Anybody else? Mr. Phillips, you coming forward to talk?
Oh, yeah. I got a different topic.
Go right ahead.
Gerald Phillips, 20-year resident of Avon Lake. Certified public accountant and concerned citizen. I asked all the residents of Avon Lake to watch the presentation Mr. Zimmerman and I did on the Avon Lake Regional Water. We did a two-part series. And I think every resident needs to watch that because it's critical. We're talking about clear water, also known as dirty water, okay? We got some information from Bill Logan over at Regional Water. And it was shocking. It was shocking. Lorco owes this city $14 million. I've been subsidizing for 20 years Lorco. $20 million that Regional Water does not have. And my rates are in essence subsidizing them. Now, what's even more shocking is that debt keeps going up. It was $11 million at the end of 2023. Now it's 14 million. So what's happening is they can't even pay for the services and the water that we're treating because the debt's going up. They're getting free water. Avon Lake residents, are you getting free water? Are you getting free water? I'm not. I'm paying my bills. For 20 years, I pay my bills. So we've been going to the commissioner's meeting and we've been telling them that this deal is terrible, that it's dead on arrival, at least I hope. And I hope this council doesn't even think about approving it in this present form. I hope. Because if you do, I'll appeal it. Because this stinks for the residents. It's a terrible deal. It's terrible. You know, but we're giving it away and we're giving up control. So, you know, that fact was just totally shocking that they're getting free water. Free water. And residents like me are paying. I don't get free water, you know? And we're just gonna bail out Lorco. That debt's gonna go away. $14 million. You know, and there's clear water or dirty water, you know, their feasibility study, I hope everybody looked at it. I hope everybody listened to the statements I made and looked at the feasibility study when they show projected revenues, projected expenses, cash flow, where for the five years in the future, it's only gonna generate 500,000 to 600,000 cash flow per year. So over the five years, it comes out to almost $3 million. And I went through the CAFRA for 2023. And Regional Water's cash flow is 2.9 in one year, equal to the five years. Why would we do such a thing? We can contract with anybody who wants to add to the system. We have a line going out there. Any community wants to expand our businesses, they can just tap into that line. We don't have to get into a 6119. The only person that benefits is, is the county. Why should we bail out the county? The other bad thing is, if you look at the agreements, this clear water entity doesn't have any funds. So guess who's gonna provide for the working capital? Regional Water. Me. I'm gonna subsidize the fact that I have to subsidize this entity, okay? Is the county putting money in? Well, no, Lorco can't because Lorco doesn't have any money because they owe us $14 million. You know, $14 million. You talk about a budget crisis? You know? It's ridiculous if this thing goes forward, okay? Even if we have control, it's still a bad deal. We have the, the crown jewel of northeast Ohio as far as sewer water treatment plant. Better than Lorraine, our rates are, their rates are almost $200 a month. Mine is about $130 a quarter. Vermillion, what they're talking about, that plant is, is on the verge of, you know, in terrible shape. They got EPA edicts all over. So does Lorraine. We don't because we were wise and we separated our sewers and we don't have EPA edicts. So why would we give up this advantage? It's a terrible idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on any topics? Come on up. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Super Commander.
I just wanted to clarify some things that he had just said. The 6119 is.
Yes, it's public comment.
I thought it was public comment.
Well, you can wait till I'm done. Thank you. 6119 that he referenced to, Mr. Phillips referenced to, that is only for sanitary sewage, correct?
That's correct, sir.
That is correct. So when he talks about us giving away free water to people, that is totally incorrect. It has nothing to do with Avon Lake water. It's only the sewer and it's only that particular part of Avon Lake Municipal Utilities is the sanitary sewage. Has nothing to do with water.
And the $14 million is the receivable.
Wait a minute, you changed the procedure. You changed the procedure. And now you won't allow him to speak? It may be.
He's already been through his five minutes at this point.
I don't, I don't care. He didn't have a turn. He shouldn't have been speaking during public comment.
The council has, if, when, if you would read 220 again, Mr. Zimmerman, you'll see that the council has the opportunity to call on consultants and also call on other council people.
I, I read all that.
You're going to have your five minutes. Mr. Zimmerman, are you finished with your point? Thank you.
Oh, no, I want him to continue.
He's finished with his. Would you like to continue with yours, sir?
This is ridiculous. This turned into a clown show.
Um, here's, time is starting.
Great. Still says five minutes right here. William Zimmerman, beautiful Avon Lake. So let's talk about 6119 like Mr. Phillips was trying to do. But better yet, let's go to the mega plant. Lorraine County Commissioner's got a grant for $67 million to try to find 1,000 acres together. And then try to find a person to come and build a big plant on it that would provide jobs for the area. That's what this is really about. They want to take our plant, use the sewage to move it along and everything. But they want to use that money to help renovate Vermillion Water System. But they want to use that money to help renovate Vermillion Water System. I read it in an article today. They don't care about Avon Lake Regional Water. They just want to use our pipelines and take it away from the city for $2 a year. That's unrealistic. Avon Lake Regional Water should be offering sewage system to all these other facilities and cities. Build another pump station from somewhere down there by the Lorraine County Airport and pump it back up here and push it back, back and forth. We have the revenue. We'd have it for sure if Lorco would pay their bill. $14 million to use any way we would want at Avon Lake Regional Water. But not given the opportunity because they don't pay their bills. Provide debt until '44. We'll all be dead by '44. I don't understand why we would even conceive this as a plan. There is no right reason to do so. When we could make our own Avon Lake Regional Water sewer better, bigger, grander. Instead of selling away, giving it away actually, bailing out Lorco. Citizens of Avon Lake, you need to understand that this is a bigger project than just our city. The Mannings have been trying to maneuver this deal for a while. They're trying to move it into the area where we can supposedly benefit from it. But Avon Lake Regional Water would be the jewel that would be given out. We shouldn't be giving that away for nothing. We have an outflow out to the middle of, well, not the middle, but several miles out in Lake Erie. And nobody else has. Nobody else can get it. It's the most important aspect of the entire deal. $67 million and the county doesn't want to give any to us. And we're going to supply the best part. They want to extend the runway though at Lorraine County Airport. So that they can supposedly have a place for the executives to fly into who would man this facility. You know, the project down outside of Columbus in New Albany has been delayed. Intel was going to buy, was building something there and it's five years away, they say now. Well, this grant money is good for five years. To find someone to put, to put a shovel in the dirt and start building. I just don't think we should be a part. So it's that time of year as we start to see signs in people's yards in regards to elections. Reminds me again of Liz Cheney's quote. We need to stop electing idiots. We need to stop electing idiots. And furthermore, you are not a king.
Anybody else like to come forward on any topic? Any topic? Okay, at this point, we're going to close the public input. And Mr. Cause, we're going to go right over to your committee. And if you could have Trans Systems as number one, that would be great.
Yeah, the first item is Trans Systems Corporation, now GFT. I think we talked this one pretty thoroughly tonight. I just want to thank both of them for showing up tonight. And we'll look forward to that, that final report. Remember sometime before that third week in November, preferably as soon as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues? Okay, Mr. Cause. So your intention then is waiting for the report to come back, the final report? And then at that point, you will be putting it onto your agenda?
Yeah, well, we're going to intend to have it on the November meeting. So we'll get that report in. We'll have time to review it. We'll put it on the November meeting. There's going to be one more public presentation with the two of them. And the goal is to have this by the end of the calendar year.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? Okay, Mr. Cause, go on to your other two.
Yeah, the other items is the amendment to the fee schedule to include the police department video recordings. As mentioned, this was an item that came, previously mentioned, this is an item that came out of the Public Safety and Health Committee. And this would increase the cost of video recordings that are requested up to $75 per hour, not to exceed $750 per hour. This is per the, the state of Ohio has put those numbers in. It is quite costly and time-consuming for police departments to provide the dash cams or the body cam videos that are requested. And this is done to help offset some of the costs and timeliness. And we hope to have this when added to the fee schedule. We're going to wait on Park and Rec Committee Commission to also bring some changes to the fee schedule forward. And we'll present those together at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. And as was mentioned in the Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Cause, there's a number of departments and committees that will be adding to the general fee schedule. So we'll put them all together. Mrs. Rossmeyer is keeping a list and we'll have one ordinance that'll take care of all of them, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion from anyone? Okay, Mr. Cause, you have something else?
The last item I have is the donation of the Southwest General Hospital vehicle to the Avon Lake Police Department. Again, as mentioned, this is going to be a donation of this vehicle, which is a 2014 Explorer Police Interceptor, Ford Explorer Police Interceptor, that will be donated to the Avon Lake Police Department. This will not be for road usage. This is going to be used on the range. So it's going to be operated as a training vehicle. So there's no need to maintain insurance or tags or anything like that on this vehicle. It's going to be used for training for the Avon Lake Police Department on the range.
And your intention is going to have?
We'll have on this for the next committee meeting. And I believe that we can just have a motion to accept the donation. I believe is all it is. So we'll have it on the next meeting for approval.
Okay, yeah, I just talked with the law director and he agrees. This will be a motion then?
Okay.
At the council meeting?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Any comments from anybody else? Okay, we're going to go back then. Communications, Environmental, and Recreation Programming. Mr. Shamir.
The first item on the agenda is the Avon Lake City TV Rules and Regulation. And I'll ask Mr. Rua to give us an update and his intention.
Mr. Rua.
Thank you very much. For many years, Avon Lake Community Television has had a set of rules and guidelines. But those rules and guidelines have never been reviewed by council or approved by councils. Bringing those rules to you. The substance of these rules is not that different than how we've operated for many years. I want to highlight what is different for you. Because this is not a red line copy. It is a, it looks much different than the rules and regulations that we've had for many years. There's a reason for that. So here are the different things about this document I want you to know. One is that we've included an introduction and admission statement for the ALCTV. This is a common practice among PEG channels. PEG is, for those who don't know, it stands for Public Education and Government. These are access channels that, we are a PEG station. Our channels are on the PEG station. Second is a set of definitions. Wanted this document to be very user-friendly. It is a document that we use with the community producers that come in, or potential community producers that come into ALCTV with the intent of creating a show or program. And it's helpful to have those definitions for that reason. Also, to just sort of clarify and make a little bit easier to digest the rules as they have stood for quite some time. The other difference that I want to call to your attention is really just the structure. So if you did, if you were someone who's familiar with the previous rules, as I know Councilman Zuber is, he has a show. These are organized a little bit differently. And the reason for that is, again, for the ease of use for our potential community producers. It's a lot easier for us to go and reference a particular section within the document than it is to kind of read through a kind of long list of bullet points. So those are a couple of changes that at first blush make these rules and regulations look quite different. But as I said, substantively, they are very similar to the pre-existing rules. Excuse me. The other two changes that I want to bring your attention to are updates. One is that we more clearly define, clearly define what we mean by underwriting in this document. So many PEG stations have some language about underwriting in their rules. We have had it as well. What we didn't do though is really get specific about what we mean by what is allowed. And of course, our content is non-commercial. So when we're talking about underwriting, we're really, we're talking about a certain level of recognition. But we are not permitting commercial content. And last is the records. So there's some reference to the records retention schedule for our content within the document as well. So those are, those are two substantive changes. This, this set of rules and regulations has been reviewed and discussed over the course of several months with the Communications and Technology Commission and has been reviewed by the legal department. And with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Shamir.
So the intention is to update these rules. But we're going to go through three readings.
Yes.
And that-
I'm sorry, I should have stated that.
So that is, that is my understanding of where we're going to go. And if I may, Mr. Ebert, so what would be the next step in this process?
Be put on for first reading at the next council, regular council meeting and subsequent to second reading, third reading. Probably the best way to do it. I don't see any reason for suspension of rules.
Yep, obviously. My apologies.
Any further discussion from anyone? I think this is really clear. And I really appreciate the categorization that is in here. Like you say, when somebody comes in, they have a question, boom, you will write to it. Good job, sir. Good job, Mr. Shamir. And Parks and Recreation Commission and the Law Director and Mr. Rua and your staff. I saw a hand down here. Mr. Cause.
Yeah, just, I didn't hear it, but I'm assuming it is so. But this came out of the Digital Media Commission.
Correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Anybody else? Very good. Thank you so much. Mr. Shamir, do you have anything else?
So the process took about four, five months to go through the, through the whole thing. And so it was a rigorous process. Thank you.
It always is. Thank you. Okay, here's something else, sir, on your agenda.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is the Resolution in Support of the United States Semi-Quincentral, basically the 250th anniversary of the United States. And the commemoration of that. So we will be passing a resolution on an emergency basis. And this will be moved to next week's council meeting.
Okay, and how many readings? Is there going to be one reading?
Just one reading.
Okay, so a suspension of the rule.
Suspension of the rule.
Okay, thank you. One reading, suspension of the rule, and it'll go into effect immediately with emergency passage. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Shamir? Yes, Ms. Gentry.
It looks as though there are required staff to be identified. Do we have those people identified?
Well, Mr. Fatch is working on getting all of that done between next, between now and the next meeting.
Thank you. Because you're right, they have to submit their names.
Yes.
With the community liaison. So this is something that's actually being coordinated throughout Ohio. So as a state, we will be working together. Along with the other states are going to be working together also. And there's some, there's some benefits for us joining forward with this. And it has to do with economic development. Do you want to talk more about that?
Sure. So there are, there are specific fundings available for this initiative, which will be opened up to the community. And as such, Mr. Fatch is, is developing a work program and a plan currently.
Thank you so much, sir. Okay, we're going to go on now to Finance Committee. Mr. Zuber.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a Finance Committee meeting this evening. We had some discussion on the comprehensive insurance policy. That's our first item. We look, like I said, to have this on first reading next week and for passage on second reading with the suspension of the rule. I did have a brief conversation with Mr. Arnold. And I think that he may want to go into that over the next few weeks on some of, what he's looked and saw, and I think that we're going to, the other thing we need to do is wait for the Finance Director to go through it with us in a little bit more detail. I know that the mayor had spoke a little bit about it at the Finance Committee also, so he may have some comments.
Thank you. Anybody have any discussion on this particular topic? Mr. Smith.
Yes, we do need to pass it so that we're insured because our insurance will lapse October 31st, I believe, was the date.
That's correct.
That's why it needs to be done. Thank you.
That's correct. And Mr. Arnold, when you speak to the Finance Director, she will be back in two days. Page 19 is one of the ones that we would like to have some follow-up on. Mr. Arnold.
I can make some comments on it now.
Oh, sure. Right ahead.
I did speak to the Finance Director before she left. And she afforded me a copy of it and I reviewed everything. It looks all to be in good, it's, we're redoing with Travelers, good company. There's very limited number of insurance companies that insure municipalities. I know that the pricing is up, but a majority of that is because we did some assessments on our buildings and we noticed that a lot of our buildings were undervalued. There was also an increase of about 13 vehicles compared to last year as well. So I think the overall rate increase was around, correct me if I'm wrong, was about 6% as far as the rate increase. But I can comment more on this next week.
And then we did remove the medical payments with auto, right? And we increased the EMT paramedics because of the risk that they are with, that they are exposed to, correct?
Yes.
Anything else, sir?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Our Law Director, Mr. Ebert, would like to speak.
Just that the mayor, myself, and Finance Director had met with the companies and had a good conversation going through each item that we were doing in the renewal. And as Mr. Zach, the Councilman just said, that prior we had a lot of underinsured properties and issues with both us and also Regional Water. So it was a good meeting that we had. Thank you.
And Regional Water will be paying their share of this, right? Right, right. Okay, Mr. Zuber, you have another item on here.
The last item is the budget meetings that we have for City Council in going over the proposed budget from the mayor. They start this Saturday, October 11th, at 8 o'clock here at Council Chambers. Our second meeting will be Saturday, November the 8th, at 8 o'clock AM here at the Council Chambers. And our final meeting will be, budget meeting will be November 15th at here in the Council Chambers. There are times also that when we need to hash out some things after those meetings, that sometimes we do that in the Finance Committee meeting. So we're going to be prepared to do that, so.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from colleagues? Okay, we will move along then. We have, now we're going to go down to Public Service Committee. And that's the one that I chair. And there's a number of items on here. I'm going to be calling Mr. Liskovic to assist me with this. The first one is that there are a number of obsolete vehicles and surplus equipment in the Public Works Department. And he has created a list. All of you have that spreadsheet in front of you. And there needs to be a motion to move these on, to allow him to auction them off, dispose of them as he sees fit. Mr. Liskovic, is there anything that you want to add to that discussion?
Yeah, just the preferred method that we're going to be utilizing is the GovDeals route, which is an online auction. Gives a good, gives a better broad reach to potential buyers for the equipment in question.
Thank you. Any comments from anyone? Okay, seeing none. We're going to go on to the next topic. And that is to amend ordinance number 25-105 for a snow and ice body package the Public Works Department to reflect a total cost of $130,257, which includes the cost increase of $3,669 from Henderson Product, Inc. And it's reflected in quote number 190578 dated September 15, 2025. And in your packet, you have what- And in your packet, you have what was presented at the Public Service Meeting last week, and we see that there was a slight increase. And Mr. Liskovic, do you want to elaborate on why there was an increase?
Yeah, the vendor had reached out to us regarding this particular package, just noting that obviously cost of materials and goods that'll be utilized to build that package had increased.
And from the previous quote, which was back in the summer, the summertime? So we're into a different quarter also. Okay. Any further comments from my colleagues? So the intent here is to have an ordinance, and they need to have this in the pipeline of purchasing. So we're going to go with suspension of the rule, emergency passage with one reading. Any comments from anyone? Okay, we're going to go on now to the second item, third item, so I forgot that. Third item, we're going to amend ordinance number 24-69 for the LORUS615.87 pedestrian improvement project from State Route 83 West to Sheffield Lake to include $486,679 for the original project fee and add $60,660 for dedicated plats for an updated total cost of $547,339 to Manneken Smith Group. Now, the reason why we're doing this is that the original ordinance did not state the amount in there, and we also need to add the dedicated plats. Mr. Liskovic, is there anything else that I should add with the explanation?
Yeah, other than the dedicated plats are related to city-owned parcels within that project, so the original scope of services did not take that into effect. This has been reviewed by ODOT and has been, I guess, granted approval from their, had been, from their standpoint, so we're just moving this forward from our standpoint. And that increase, it does also, the $60,000 still falls under the 90/10 coverage of the project, so we'll be responsible cash-wise for 10% of that increase.
That's great. That's great that we still get the grant and that it's going to be extended to this. That's great. So this, again, is going to be, because you need to get it back to ODOT, we have other deadlines, so it's going to be an ordinance with suspension of the rule, emergency passage with one read. Any comments from my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go on to the last one for Public Service. And that's, again, we have to update our ordinance. This is amend ordinance number 22-174 for the LORUS618.52 pedestrian improvement project from State Route 83 East to Bay Village to include the total project cost of $157,185 to Manneken Smith Group. And this is going to the east, the other one was going to the west. Mr. Liskovic, is there anything else that I should add?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay. Any comments from anybody? Okay. Again, we have to, the intention is to get this through, to get back over to ODOT and to our subcontractors. So this is going to be another ordinance, and it's going to be emergency passage, suspension of the rule, first read. Okay. That brings us over to short-term rentals, ad hoc committee. Mr. Arnold?
Thank you. A while back, council appointed, we created an ad hoc committee. Myself is chairman, including David Koss and Amy Gentry, to kind of look about any problems or issues or ways we can make short-term rentals happen in Avon Lake. This committee was not formed to ban short-term rentals. The committee agreed that they do serve a purpose here in the community. Currently, just the public knows, there's approximately 20 or so short-term rentals in Avon Lake. Some residents did have some concerns about the concentration in specific neighborhoods, as well as the, how many people can occupy a short-term rental. So we reviewed that, we had public input, we've had, I don't know, probably a half dozen meetings on this. So we're creating a ordinance, Chapter 1484, that will be discussed over the next five, six weeks here at the City Council. Particularly, we're asking the short-term rentals to register. In that registration, we'll have a contact name and phone number so that our safety services can contact them in case of emergency or in case there's issues. We've also, in the legislation, we also have limited short-term rentals to 1,000, no more than one short-term rental per 1,000 feet. It also includes inspections, particularly these, to make sure that all the short-term rentals have smoke detectors, fire extinguishers. I mentioned there's also a limit on how many people can be a part of a particular short-term rental, and we limited it to two people per bedroom. So if there's four bedrooms, it's eight people plus an additional two people. I think that's about it. Obviously, we'll talk more about this. I don't know if any of the members of my committee have any other comments or questions on this. This is a redlined version that was included in the packet. We'll have a more, we'll get it cleaned up for our first reading next week, and it will go three readings. I will say, though, I'd like to, I don't want to suspend the rules, but I'd like to pass it by emergency so that it's a fact as soon as, that it goes into effect as soon as it's passed. I don't know if any members of that committee feel the same way on that. Yep, they're nodding their heads? Okay.
Ms. Gentry, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so I thought that we added the nuisance back in that we were just identifying if the property was deemed a nuisance based on our existing ordinances. We didn't need to define what nuisance was, that we would revoke their licensing?
Yeah, we did include that, yes. Under Section 662.
I didn't see that in there. Is that in there? Did I miss it? I just see omitted.
It's omitted. That's the only one that I saw. I don't see it either. It's only omitted.
What page are you on, Mr. Shamir? Could you put your speaker on, please? Like in here?
It was omitted. I don't have a page number on mine.
It's in 1484.07.
Point 07?
I think it just didn't get updated, that's all.
So where it says omitted, this needs to be added?
No, I think we chose to remove that section. I can't remember why we did. I think it's, I think it's mentioned elsewhere, but we can look into that. Like I said, it's a work. Mr. Koss?
Madam Chair, may, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
May I speak?
Go right ahead, Mr. Koss.
Yeah, we did, we did recommend removing that section as it had been written, and what we wanted in its place was just language that basically stated that the occupants or owners of short-term rentals would need to adhere to Section 662, and that violations of that could result in revocation or suspension of their license or permit. That was, we wanted to just identify that they are subject to it, and if you violate it, you could have your license revoked. That's what we were, that was my understanding of what we were looking for. I don't know if that was the same as Ms. Gentry's as well, too.
And Mr. Arnold, what Ramona Bogans showed me was that we already have a nuisance listed D, I'm sorry, D6?
Sorry, what section was that?
Okay, 1484.02D, as in David, versus revocation or lapse, number six. Upon a determination by a court of competent jurisdiction, the short-term rental property has become a nuisance pursuant to...
Got it.
...chapter 662 of the codified ordinances or other controlling Ohio law. Does that work for you?
I think.
Does that work for you?
Madam Chair, could you read that, what you just said again? What number is it?
Okay, it's 1484.03, D as in David, versus...
03.
Oh, I'm sorry, .02, is D versus revocation or lapse?
Yeah, I see it, thank you.
At the top?
So, if I may?
Yeah.
So upon determination by a court of competent jurisdiction at the short-term rental property. So this is what, this is why I said that we need to look at 662, because that declaration of declaring a nuisance is not done by the court, I believe. That is done by the police chief, the safety director, the police chief, or his designee. So that's why I've been saying that it needs to reference 662, because that's how we designate nuisances for everybody else. And I think you have to say it in there, that this is being held to that same standard. So the mayor's got a comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I would just add that it's also referenced in 1484.99, which is the penalty section, which indicates that, we'll read the whole thing, but declare a property a nuisance in accordance with Chapter 662 of the codified ordinances. So we just need to make sure that we align the section that was previously noted, revocation or lapse, with our penalty section, but it does reference it. I don't think you need to have the entire section, which was the 1484.07, because we already have an ordinance section, which is Chapter 662.
I would agree with that. You just have to link them all up. It's in different parts, you just got to put them together.
Because it's not just the court that can do that. It is, as Mr. Koss stated, police chief can, if it complies with 662.
Anybody else? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, is there a fee, there going to be a fee attached with the license?
That was...
Or the certificate?
Yeah, I think that was discussed. Another thing that we talked about, Jenny said $50, you recommended $50 a year?
Well, my recommendation is to go with what the Senate bill, bills, and the House bills, and also the substitute Senate bills, the substitute House bills are recommending. And they're agreeing on $50 as the fee one time until that property transfers at the county level. The other fee would be up to a 7.5 lodging fee, I'm sorry, 7.5% tax. And the Senate and the House both say that it's required that the platform that the owner is using collects that fee. And the way that both of the bills are reading right now is that if you don't put that fee in, you will not get that fee later when they go into effect. And I've heard back from some of our Ohio legislators, not all of them, it is working its way through the Senate. The House is a little bit slower at this point. I don't know if it's going to make it through this year or not, but the recommendation is get it while you can. So that was the recommendation.
Okay, I would just ask that the law director help us out with that, what language we can use in that situation, especially with 662, and how to encompass that into the legislation and then...
$50 and then 7.5.
If I could, Madam Chair?
Okay.
Question? I have a question for...
Yeah, go right ahead.
For my committee members down there. We would like them to renew every year, correct? But not pay the fee every year?
They're not allowed to.
Okay. But my point is that owners change, properties change, we want to make sure we have an updated list every year.
Yes, and I believe we also had the inspection yearly, is that correct?
The fire department wants to do a yearly inspection. They recommended.
Yeah, I think the yearly inspection is okay. I'm not really for or against it. I think, within the application, they fell out. I mean, we talked about some of the items that we said that they have to have, and that's administrative role as far as the application goes, but yeah, we'll get that cleaned up for first reading next week.
Mr. Smith, your hands up.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem to me that $50 is going to cover the time that we're going to be, cost for us to send Building Department and/or Police and/or Fire to inspect these places.
That might be another reason to have a 7.5 lodging fee, 1%.
Well, yeah, I mean, but when it comes to, you know, the fee base of it, I also think that we're a charter community, so I think that has some part of it, too. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor?
I just have a question, whether for Councilman Arnold or generally, is we've been getting calls about the expiration of the moratorium, and just need a little guidance because that, it will be expiring, I believe, very soon.
Midnight.
And just need to know if that's on the radar or not, so we can advise residents when they call.
It expires at midnight, tonight.
I can just say, within our committee, there was no appetite to renew that moratorium. Thank you.
Okay. And so your intention then, sir, is to have it on Monday nights, next Monday's, I'm sorry, next Tuesday's agenda, the 14th?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Three readings.
You got it. Okay, other business, we're almost done. Other business. There's two items that you have in your packet. When we were going through 220, we were looking at the charter, we were going through 220, it was found that there was language that stated that we needed to have written policy and procedures. Council has never had written policies and procedures. So now you have written policies and procedures that came off of 220. It's been through the review of the Law Department, and this would be adopting it by motion. And then the last item is a council chamber policy and procedure. It's only a one-pager, but what we'd like to do is we'd like to have that adopted. We're going to make it into a large framed notice that we will place in here for all the residents to be able to see. And again, this has gone through legal review. Any comments from my colleagues? To my right? To my left? The intent is to pass this adopted by motion. Okay, legislation. We have a third reading, ordinance number 25-148. This has to do with the red aircraft warning beacon formerly mounted on top of the Avon Lake Power Plant smoke stack and declared as a historic landmark. Anything else, Mr. Smith?
No.
Okay. Next one, ordinance number 20, I'm sorry. Any discussion from anyone? Okay, ordinance number 25-151. This is an ordinance approving the improvement plan for Avon Center Estates, number two, Phase Six, declaring an emergency. Mr. Smith, anything else on this one?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, we got through three readings. And is there any miscellaneous business and announcements? Mr. Koss, what I'd like you to do is open up your jacket and show your shirt.
Yeah, this is the, this is the 2025 Boo by the Woods t-shirt that is available for all of our volunteers, and we still have spots for volunteers available. So if you want to volunteer for Boo by the Woods, you get one of these really cool burnt orange t-shirts. Contact the Avon Lake Public Library if you're interested in volunteering, or visit their Facebook page to do so. So Boo by the Woods, the Trail of Haunted Tales for Saturday, the 11th, is completely sold out once again. There are no tickets available for that, but we have plenty of free activities that day, so even if you were not able to do the spooky outdoor trail, the family trail, or the indoor haunted house, we encourage people to still come on out. There's going to be a lot of fun things for people to do, for families to do. There are still tickets for the indoor haunted library for Thursday, October 9th. Those tickets can be purchased off of the City of Avon Lake Park and Rec page, and note, those do not have to be purchased by residents at this point. Those are open to anybody that wants to purchase them anywhere, that you can order them, they're available online, and they're available for Thursday. There's still tickets left for Thursday, so you can go on to the, like I said, the Avon Lake Park and Rec page and purchase your tickets for that event. So again, the 9th and the 11th, Boo by the Woods, 2025, Trail of Haunted Tales, and we have a lot of great groups coming together, and the weather looks like it's going to be absolutely perfect. It's going to cool down, it's going to feel like fall, so we encourage the community to come out and enjoy this event. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our law director has something that he'd like to, that he'd like to explain to us. There's been an update with one of the lawsuits.
Yes, I, thank you, Madam President. I had sent to council, I believe, and the director's decision finally came back on the one lawsuit filed in Marin County Compostelis Court by Mr. Zern, Mr. Phil... We finally came back on the one lawsuit filed in Lorain County Common Police Court by Mr. Zermus or Phillips. It was a, a brief hearing or pre-trail. And then we, they, we had submitted our briefs substantially a long time ago concerning it in the court. The plaintiffs brought three cases against the city. One for declaratory judgment relief, one for injunctive relief, and for taxpayers' relief. And the court writing, and I sent the copy, the, the opinion, the writing going into detail. The court, based on the undisputed evidence, the city's motion to dismiss is granted as this court lacks jurisdiction to hear plaintiff's case, plaintiff's claims. The matter is hereby dismissed. All claims against all defendants cost to the plaintiff. Case closed. So that's the first case that was filed over a year ago. So if you have any, I, I think everyone got a copy of it. It's just a short opinion, but there's a lengthy briefs if you want to read them. But, you know, the decision was ruled in the city's favor, so just wanted to report that.
Thank you very much. And while we're speaking about lawsuits real quick, I believe it was also stated in the Finance Committee meeting that due to the, the exposure with all these lawsuits from the two gentlemen, that our deductible and our insurance needed to be increased. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct. It went from $10,000 to $25,000. However, that could go down depending upon our exposure moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Koss?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. As the sponsor of that piece of legislation regarding the, the speed limit in the business district over there, I want to thank Mr. Ebert and his legal staff for their work on that matter. That was the first of numerous lawsuits that were filed by those two gentlemen. And I'm glad that this one got thrown out as other ones have, and hopefully, all of them will be in the very near future. Thank you, Mr. Ebert, and please let your staff know how much it is appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert. Thank you. Ms. Gentry?
I just had one announcement, and that is that I'm having a board meeting on Wednesday this week at 7:00. And that'll be in Council Conference Room. Is that right? Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing no other miscellaneous businesses or announcements, we're going to now adjourn. Thank you.